Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the Volusia County School Board. Would everyone please rise and say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome. We are meeting, this is September 28th, it's 5:30, and we all here at the, at the dais, we agree to disagree and treat each other with mutual respect. We value our diverse views and encourage each and every one of us to express them. Please silence your phones. We will be having four different times for particip-, uh, public participation. But before we have those announcements, I would like to introduce everyone, to every one of you, to our dais. To my far left is Mr. Carl Persis, representing District Four. To his right is Mr. Ruben Cologne, representing District Five. To his right is our school board attorney, Mr. Ted Doran. To my far right is Erin Leebin, our resource clerk for our school board, in which we could not function without her, so thank you, Erin. Uh, to her left is Ms. Anita Burnett, she represents District Two. To her left is Vice Chair Jamie Haynes, representing District One. To her left is our superintendent, Dr. Scott Fritz. And I'm Linda Cuthbert, your chair, and I represent District Three. Items for approval on this agenda tonight is 3.01, 6.02, and 20.01. Items, um, we will have participation, public participation for items on the consent agenda. 6:30 certain for items of general interest pertaining to public education in our school district. A total of 15 minutes will be provided at this time. People who have submitted cards, each person will have three minutes to speak. I will announce the first and the second person to come, so there's a nice steady stream, we can get it done in, in 15 minutes. Time will also be provided for public comment on any action item before the board vote is called. And time will be provided at the end of the board meeting for all of those who would like to have additional comment on our school district. 1.02, district vision statement and board member comments. Would anyone like to start this evening? Mr. Cologne?
So this past, whoa, that's loud. So this past week, I had the pleasure of joining both Enterprise Elementary and Gal- and Heritage Middle School for their, um, Donuts with Dad, and they did a Dad Bring Your Child to School Day at Heritage, where myself, Sheriff Chip Wood, a gentleman from All Pro Dads, one of our teachers, and Neville, um, Mr. Wilkinson and Neville, served on a panel to speak about things that men just don't talk about. We don't talk about feelings, we don't talk about what's going on, we don't talk about a lot with our kids, and so we were able to, um, once the students left, just the dads were left. And I, when I tell you that, both schools filled the cafeteria with dads who brought their kids to school, I mean, they were packed. And so it was a real blessing to be able to share and learn from, from my colleagues who were on stage, as well as interact with the dads who took the time that morning to spend time with their children. Uh, so that was the highlight of my week, and, uh, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cologne, that must have been thrilling. Did you eat donuts?
Negative.
Negative. Okay.
In fact, they ran out of food at Heritage.
Oh, my.
Because they thought, middle school, first time, how many dads could you possibly get? And I tell you, they were finding food from, I don't know where, cereal, pastries, they were just scrapping to be able to give everybody something because the demand was that big. And, you know, anytime it's involving dads, and the dads are participating, I mean, that's a, it's a good thing to run out of food, so.
And, you know, I don't think there's enough good, positive, um, I guess, news out there about dads, and that's always nice to hear. Thank you. Mr. Persis?
Thank you, ma'am chair. My guess is the middle school kids ate all the donuts, personally. That's okay. Uh, what I would say is, just a big shout out to all the schools, and the teachers, principals going through their open houses, uh, that's so much work. It's exciting work, uh, but it's draining work, too. When, when, when the last parent leaves, it's like, oh, we did it, you know? But it's, uh, it's a lot of fun, and I know with the COVID, there was a lot of angst about all of that, and how's it gonna go, and how many are gonna show up, and, you know, mask and not mask, and all those things, but, uh, it's, it's great for the children, uh, it's great for secondary kids, too, for their parents to follow their, um, children around and see how they go from class to class to class to class, and how little time they have to get from class to class to class to class. So when they see all the teachers, and we just have such great teachers out there, and it's that one time, sometimes for parents, it's the only time that they really get to see their child's teacher, particularly in secondary school, and, uh, it's a great opportunity for the teachers to make that great first im- impression on the parents. And just, I, and I know, Dr. Fritz, you'd feel this way, normally when parents leave, they're going, wow, they just, wow, what a, my child's teacher is so great, and they're so smart, and, you know, they just, they just really don't, um, uh, get it, get the full appreciation until you're actually there. So I just wanted to say that. I know it's, it's a great deal of work, but I know it's greatly appreciated from the parents, too.
Thank you, Mr. Persis. Ms. Haynes?
Thank you, Ms. Cuthbert. I, too, want to reiterate about the open house and the fact that we could hold it this year and allow parents the opportunity to go on, but I also want to say, um, a thank you to Dr. Fritz and his team for allowing field trips to start back up, because, you know, we've even got one or two that we've had on the last board meeting and on tonight. And those are opportunities that these kids otherwise would not have, and so I appreciate the fact that we're allowing our students to go back out onto field trips, especially with the learning experiences and everything. And even being tied into that, um, I've heard from some kids, they're excited about the homecoming piece that's happening now on campus because they missed out on homecoming, um, last year, and so there's excitement about that. And that builds that school spirit piece, and I think that's part of what we have to build back in, especially at the high school level. Because it wasn't until I was speaking to one of the high school principals, and what she said was true. Our freshmen this year that are on campus, some of them, the last time they were on campus was seventh grade, when they went home for spring break. Because some of them never returned last year as eighth graders. They stayed home and did live, or they did Volusia online learning or homeschooling. And when you just stop to think about that, and you think about what that means, not just for the freshmen that are on campus this year, maybe for the first time, it's the same way for sixth graders that walked into middle school. Some of them walked out of school as fourth graders for spring break, and this is their first chance back. And we've, you know, we always know that our VPK and our kindergarten students are new, but we've got kids in first and second grade that are also, you know, coming into campuses new. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity, because we know schools will run better when kids feel that family piece, you know, where, I'm a part of my school and I have pride in it. So thank you, Dr. Fritz, for everything that you and your team have done to make those opportunities available for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Ms. Burnett?
Good evening, everybody. So, um, I volunteer on a, on a board, uh, Port Orange Community Trust Family Days, and so this was our big event, and it was nice to see, on Saturday morning, they have a parade. And there was, uh, I believe, four schools that the band and the dance team participated in the parade, and they did a great job. I've got some video of it, but obviously, I'm not gonna share it here, but, um, it was great to see, and they had a really good time. Not only did the bands participate in the dance groups, but a lot of the clubs and individual students volunteered that day. And, um, I got to talk to Mrs. Nagus from Atlantic, she's the Teacher of the Year there, and her team, she leads the Teal Academy, and they were there participating with some of the kids' functions, and she got to, uh, introduce me to some of the things that they were doing at school. So it was really nice to see all the kids out there participating and building up the community again, and knowing that this is part of what we do in life, is give back in the community. That was nice. And I want to give another shout out to one of the Atlantic band members, Riley Lehman. She made, um, the band for the Macy's Great American Marching Band, so she's gonna be participating in the Macy's Day Parade, so that's quite an accomplishment right there. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burnett. That, that's a lot of fun. You had good weather?
Oh, it was beautiful weather.
That's good. It's nice to be in Florida at this time of year.
Yes.
I would like to compliment all the campuses, administration, teachers, SAC teams, as well as PTAs, and students, a lot of student government associations, um, at each and every level of school, because they are thinking outside the box to create, um, safety when it comes to trying to put out the same normal activities. Um, and it's, and it's interesting to see the workings and how simple we could have done this, uh, so many different times, and it's very taxing for administrators to do this, because you don't really know, um, how it will end, and how things will, you know, like, would work out. But sometimes you just take that risk, and it's just a wonderful opportunity for kids to do something different. So I do appreciate all of that. And also, I have a shout out, because I'm gonna be participating. Uh, the Volusia Manufacturing Association has a robot brawl this Saturday at Jackie Robinson Stadium. Um, I'm going to be judging, so watch out, I'll try to keep my nonpartisan hat on, but it's gonna be a lot of fun for all that morning, and keeping an eye on good weather, so I hope your good weather is our good weather. So I hope to see everybody at the robot brawl Saturday morning, October 2nd. So that concludes our, um, our board member comments about our vision statement. 2.01, agenda changes. I would like to announce one adjustment for an agenda. We are moving 19.01, the Habsin Sales Tax Project Oversight Committee presentation is going to follow, uh, Mr., uh, Dr. Fritz's recognitions. So 19.01 will follow 4.01. Is that all right with all of you?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so then can I have a motion to approve the agenda amended?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. The amended, uh, agenda has been, the motion has been made by Ms. Burnett, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Haynes. Is there any further comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Okay, thank you. The amend, uh, the agenda has been amended. Uh, 3.01, administrative appointments. Dr. Fritz?
Thank you, Ms. Cuthbert. We have two this evening. I'm gonna ask Hillary Blum to come forward. Board members and public, as you know, we have a vacancy at Mainland High School due to the promotion, um, of Ms. Kim Matthews to Principal Campbell, and would be my pleasure to recommend Hillary today for that position. Let me tell you a little bit about her. She earned her bachelor's degree in art education from the University of Central Florida, and a master's degree in educational leadership from Stetson University. Hillary began in Volusia County Schools in 2014 as an art teacher at Mainland High School, where she also served as a testing coordinator. Her current position is she is a TOA, Teacher on Assignment, at Forest Lakes Elementary School. It would be my honor and privilege to recommend her to be the next Assistant Principal at Mainland High School.
Thank you, Dr. Fritz. You've heard the recommendation of Dr. Fritz to appoint Hillary Blum, Assistant Principal at Mainland High School, a Buccaneer. Uh, is there a motion?
I motion to approve.
Okay. Ms. Burnett has made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been seconded by Mr. Carl Persis. Any comments or discussion? Yes, ma'am? Oh, sorry, sir.
Do you wanna go first? So, I have to say, anybody that's been a testing coordinator at any level is more than ready to be an assistant principal, because when you can manage all of those tests, because I did it, and it's not easy, um, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Mr. Cologne?
And so, if you add to that, being the right hand and helping with our students at Forest Lake, and I'll leave that right there, you're ready. So even though I regrettably lose you in D5, someday you'll be back, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Anyone else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, please say no. Motion is passed, I think you're stuck being a, you know, Buccaneer. So I, I'm really thrilled for you. And when does she start?
She, she will start tomorrow.
Something about buck pride, Ida used to say. What was it, buck pride?
Buck pride never dies.
Buck pride never dies.
Buck pride never dies.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much, I'm, I'm very honored to return back to Mainland, and I am very appreciative for all the leadership, the great administrators that I've had, and the teachers that have inspired me to be here tonight, and do the great work that I'm about to do at Mainland High School. So I'm really glad I'm going back to Buccaneer country, and, you know, buck pride never dies. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and good luck to you. Dr. Fritz?
And I'd like to ask Kelly Moore to come forward. Board members and public, as you remember, we do have an opening at Chisholm Elementary School for an Assistant Principal due to her promotion from the current, or the previous Assistant Principal to Principal at Coronado. And I'd like to t- tell you a little bit about Kelly Moore, who's my recommendation for this evening. Kelly's earned a bachelor's degree in anthropology from Florida State University, and a master's degree in anthropology from the University of Central Florida, as well as a master's degree in educational leadership from Stetson University. She began teaching 10th grade world history in 2011. In 2013, she came to Volusia County and taught 7th grade civics at River Springs Middle School. Since then, Kelly has worked as an administrative TOA at Spruce Creek, Spruce Creek Elementary and at Chisholm Elementary, where she currently is today. And I'd like to certainly make the recommendation, um, that she become the next Assistant Principal at Chisholm Elementary.
You've heard the recommendation of Dr. Fritz to appoint Kelly Moore as Assistant Principal at Chisholm Elementary. Panther country, right? Okay, is there a motion?
I make the motion that we appoint Kelly Moore as the Assistant Principal at Chisholm Elementary.
Ms. Haynes has made the motion to appoint her. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, the second motion has been made by Ms. Burnett. Any discussion? Um, Chisholm is very special to me. When I first moved to Volusia County in 86, my children attended the old Chisholm Elementary. It's where I learned what red ants do to a person. Um, because I was participating in a PTA car wash, didn't realize that the little, little bites on my ankle were so deadly. And I'm als-, I also learned I was allergic to them. So, but Chisholm, uh, is a brand-new school, it's only two years old. I didn't have Melissa Marple in class, but I worked with, with, uh, her mom, uh, who was a media specialist. It's a long, long history. You're going to a fantastic school. So congratulations to you, I know you will be a wonderful positive, you'll be a wonderful positive addition to them, so congratulations. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, all those opposed, please say nay. Okay, congratulations, young lady. Would you like to say something?
Yes, please.
Please.
Um, I just want to thank Melissa Marple, she is an amazing, amazing educator, and I'm so thankful to work with her and continue to work with her and stay at Chisholm. Chisholm is a really special place, and I, from the day I set foot in there, I, it, it's just a wonderful place to work, amazing faculty and staff and community. Um, I just want to thank my husband for being there for me and supporting me, um, and my parents are here as well, so thank you for everything, and thank you, guys.
Thank you. Wish you well. And when does she start? Okay, when does she start?
She starts also tomorrow.
Okay, good luck. Thank you. That concludes administrative appointments. 4.01, recognitions for October 2021. Dr. Fritz?
We actually have three recognitions, uh, that we're gonna recognize today. Volusia County is proud to celebrate the month of October as National Bullying Prevention Month. This signature event of National Bullying Prevention Month is Unity Day, which will be celebrated on October 20th. To participate in Unity Day, students, staff, and schools will wear and share orange to unite for kindness, accept, acceptance, and inclusion, to prevent students from being bullied. One in five students report being bullied at school. National Bullying Prevention Month is a time for us to focus, raise awareness, and recognizing that bullying can be addressed through education and support. And what I'd like to do at this time, board, is I'd like to ask, uh, Ms. Rose Rowland and Mr. Thomas Bond to come forward, and I've shared with you that this is an area that we will address, um, and I wanted to share with you some of the work that's already in progress, uh, for us as we go forward.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Chairman Cuthbert, board members, and Dr. Fritz. As Dr. Fritz has stated, October is Bully Prevention Month, and, um, I know there's been some concerns in the past about, um, the victim being, um, treated more aggressively than the actual aggressor. So we have made some changes to our, um, matrix, where, um, the, the victim does not receive the consequences instead of the, um, actual aggressor. What we've done this year in our matrix, um, the first offense with a bully that substantiated, um, that bully, the aggressor will get five-day suspension from school, require a re-entry meeting with the parent, and make the parent aware that the next offense, the child will receive a more severe consequence. And after the second substantiated bullying, um, uh, incident, the aggressor will be given a Hope Scholarship to move to another school without choice, be it one of our alternative settings or another school, where he can go to the closest school, um, to his home, and the parent is responsible for their transportation. We will still offer the, a Hope Scholarship to the victim, but they won't have to, it'll be their choice, but with our law, we have to offer it to them, so we will do that. We want to make sure all to know that, you know, bullying is not tolerated, we have to be accepted of, accepted of each other, um, because we're all human, we all have to live in this world together, so we want bullying to go our way altogether, we know that won't happen, but we must protect the victims that are being bullied, um, at every cost, uh, because they deserve to be in school and go to school in a, a free environment that's free of being troubled or being bullied or anything of that nature. So we're here to educate the aggressor and the victim, both, but we don't want the victim to be punished more severely than the aggressor. And as Dr. Fritz has said, that, um, October is the month, and October 20th is the actual day that we celebrate, um, bullying, uh, the day, aggressive day for bullying, um, and we wear orange on that particular day, so if anybody wants to participate, whether you're at home or in schools, we invite you to do that, um, um, on October 20th, which is our Bullying Prevention Month, October's the month, but we celebrate it actually on October 20th. And so, Dr. Fritz had asked us last school year to develop a bullying task force, and so, um, we worked on that, and Mr. Bond has done an awesome job of putting the task forces together. We included parents, students, administrators, teachers, and we also included victims, those that had been a victim of bullying and someone that has actually committed the offense. We want to hear from everyone, um, as opposed to just those that have been bullied. So we had parents to come on, teachers, administrators, so Mr. Bond has done a good job of getting together, um, a PowerPoint that he held his first meeting on September 23rd, um, with those parents and those students, so he's gonna share right now what he has put together.
I'm looking forward to wearing orange on October 20th. The bully prevention is something that's close to my heart, you know, over eight years ago, um, as a part of a team initiating the latest bully prevention into the middle schools that lost traction along the way, unfortunately. But it's something that's a, that I consider a silent disease, because it's the silence where the power is leveraged, and we have to do more to educate, um, all stakeholders, not just students, but the parents, even the adults, to address all angles that are a part of this behavior. I also think it's important that we continue mitigating the, uh, implementation of some of our programs, like social emotional learning, restorative practices, PBIS, to understand how those all intertwine to provide bully prevention, uh, strategies. So at our first meeting, uh, this past week, uh, we took time to build group norms, uh, because it's important that we have that safe space, because we have, um, all stakeholders being represented to, uh, share their, their, um, experiences with bullying, uh, some positive, in the, in the sense that they were resolved and, and found that resolution to move forward, but then others negative, where, you know, they're still hanging on to some feelings. But it's important that they understand that we're in a safe environment, to listen to one another as we review, uh, current policy, to see what we can do. And so I shared with them why we're there, why we, why we were created, uh, to help look at the current situation. I want to ensure them that we're not just a Band-Aid to be put on a problem, but we really want to look deep to see where we can make some real change, effective, positive change. And I ensured, assured them that, um, we had district support with this particular program, or this particular committee because of the direct alignment with Goal Three in the strategic plan. We assessed schools that had high, uh, high frequency of incidences with bullying, to ensure that those folks were at the table, and we also assessed, uh, accessed schools that, um, weren't so much on the radar, but we needed to have a full and fair representation across the district. As Ms. Rowland had mentioned, we have, um, representatives from students and families from all three levels, we have community members, we have teachers represented from middle school and elementary schools, school-level administration from elementary schools and middle schools, and then, of course, our district staff, supporting my, uh, myself, Nick Prince with Restorative Practice, Mandy Elsie with PBIS, Greg Pender with Discipline, Jessica, excuse me, Jessica McIntyre with Mental Health Services, and Ingrid Cruz, and Donette Esselholm with our Support Through School Counselors and SEO. We had a pre-meeting, um, again, as Ms. Rowland mentioned, back, uh, in July, where we reviewed the matrix to increase the consequences for those that have confirmed bully offenses. And then we had a pre-meeting with, um, my district staff, of the, uh, folks I had just mentioned, so that we could really have that conversation about how we're moving forward with, um, presenting the information to our, to our committee, uh, members. Our driving goals initially, um, is to share the perspectives so that we can build that understanding. We're going to review the Bully Investigation Guidelines and the Hope Scholarship aspect of things that's coming forth at our next meeting. We're going to review, as I mentioned, our SEL, PBIS, and restorative practices, to understand how these all intertwine to support bully prevention strategies. We're going to ask tough, tough questions. Are we doing enough to protect our victims? But then we also have to ensure that people understand that we are doing things to follow the written law, you know, and we have to understand how we're communicating that to families that are a part of these unfortunate instances. I'm thinking the pie in the sky is developing some kind of educational materials. I remember growing up in the eighties, the infomercials on NBC, you know, the 20-second message, and then the little rainbow goes across, the more you know. Somehow infusing these type of educational materials, whether we had to partner with local media stations or whatnot, or maybe they already have some things produced, but somehow getting, like, a homegrown scenario, using our own kids, uh, that have been a part of this or want to be a part of it, to send that message to, again, all levels. It's gotta be, and when I say all levels, I'm not talking about just stakeholder groups, but I'm talking about all grade levels, all the way down to pre-K, is where the education needs to begin. And then, I want to be able to, uh, bring back whatever the committee recommends to this group here, for any potential policy change, if it's warranted, or needed, or necessary. One of the agreements that we have as a group, especially with the families that might have been involved, is to understand that we're not there to rehash or help them reach a different outcome than what they may have already received, but that we're moving forward to reach positive solutions. I asked the group what else they would like to accomplish, they said, unification and standardization across all schools, zero tolerance, find ways to support all groups, ask those tough questions. Remember, it's important that we don't label bullies or bully, you know, we don't say they're bullies, you know, it's bully-type behavior, because that kind of labeling gives power, and we want to make sure we don't do that. And then educate. We need to advocate for time to provide this education, and then find ways to infuse it with sustainability. We agreed to meeting in a couple of weeks, October 13th, and we'll review those policies, and I'll continue to report. This is still at a very early stage in what we're doing in this important work. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Thomas and Rose. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Board, questions, comments? Mr. Cologne?
So how do we define bullying as far as our policy goes? And, you know, if two kids get into it in the cafeteria, is that bullying? How do we define bullying?
It has to be repeated offense by the same offender and the same person that's being offended. So it has to happen, one time does not consider, once does not consider to be a bullying offense. It has to happen on more than a repetitive basis by the same individual against the same victim.
And I guess this is a question in common at the same time, so don't necessarily need an answer, but do we have enough opportunities for our students to report? I know we have the Fortify Florida, but that, you know, might be considered an extreme, even though, you know, it's definitely an avenue that they can use if, you know. However, do we have enough opportunities where the student can proactively know who the safe person is to go to?
That comes with education.
Yeah.
And the students letting them know what the expectation is. When we started with Olveas, it was an agreement. If something happens, you tell an adult before you leave school, and you tell your parent when you get home. But some schools that have specific systems in place, I know that a lot of school counselors have like an anonymous box outside their door.
Right, or in the media center.
For reporting purposes, and in the media center as well. But it's certainly a good question because that's part of the standardization that we would like to see as we continue this work.
Because I think that would make it very powerful. Again, everybody, you know, the same message, same opportunities, whether it's an app, whether it's, how can we make it so that students feel comfortable enough to report when they are being bullied and know that, you know, we actually, and I'm, Dr. Fritz and I'm elated that we're finally looking at this, because it's something that a lot of times the kids don't say anything because they're afraid.
They are.
And so to know that we actually have their back, you know.
And that's the silence I was speaking of.
And most schools do have a system where they have boxes around school and the media center front office where they can drop it in their counselor's box, and those boxes are checked period by period to make sure that the kids have, to see who the kids have dropped items in the boxes for the council to deal with. So the students are made aware where those boxes are, and they are checked regularly.
Awesome.
We had the data when we implemented Olveas, and we had expected, and I'm not saying that's the answer here, just based on my own experience and the data we collected, we had anticipated a spike in bullying reporting once we started the Olveas program, because we were educating on what it meant, and we were taking that time to talk and to educate. You know, if you had a fight in the hallway, the teacher didn't just blow it off, or whoever was involved didn't blow it off and not talk about it, hey, let's get silent, let's get back to work. We took the time to stop and talk about what went wrong, what could we do different next time? You know, so it's some of these little things that we want to place that could be very helpful in preventing future occurrences, but we did see a spike after we began the educational piece of it because they felt empowered, they could report. It was a great thing, and then it started to go the other direction.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Ms. Haynes?
Thank you, Ms. Cuthbert. So I want to thank you because one of the things that I know several of us at some point in time have brought forward is the fact that the student being bullied is the child that we've been saying, here, you can go to another school, and that's not fair. I mean, they're already a victim, and then trying to push them off to another school where they may not have any friends is wrong. So I am happy to see that you've made a change already in the procedures, and the student that is doing the bullying is going to be the student that you're going to say, you can now go to a different school, and not remove the victim because that victim has already been bullied. And so I'm happy to see that we have flipped that and that we're going to allow the student that has been the victim to stay on campus where they already, you know, have a safety net and have people that they know. Because I have felt all along, you know, even when I was a classroom teacher, that the child that's doing the bullying, it's almost like they get rewarded because the victim has to move, and the bully gets to stay there with their friends. Well, if we remove the bully from their friend group and they have to go somewhere new, then I think that may help deter some of this. And just a few suggestions as you meet with this group, we've got to get student buy-in, but we've also got to get parent buy-in because without the parent buy-in piece, we're not going to be able to stop some of these students that are choosing to bully others. And our administrators right now are facing some crises. Like, we're adding extra work onto their shoulders and the teachers' shoulders because the big thing now is to make videos of these fights that are breaking out, and they are posting them on, like, they just, every time, because I've worked with the communications team as they've come up or we've been alerted, and we've worked on pulling these fighting sites down, but, you know, we've got some middle schools out there that these kids are just, every time we pull a fighting site back down, they video another fight on campus, and they put another fighting site up. And so we need parent, we need parent buy-in with this too, because there should be consequences. If kids are creating fighting sites, you know, and videotaping, you know, or actually engaging in the fighting in order to put a video up, we've got to come up with some ways to stop this behavior. Because our administrators then are losing their opportunity to focus on the educational piece because they're having to spend hours dealing with these fighting sites that are coming up. And I think there should be some very strict consequences that if a student actually videotapes a fight and posts it out on social media, there should be some consequences for that.
And there's a consequence, yes.
Because one of the middle schools alone in my district, this is a constant problem. And Mr. Cologne knows because between he and I, every time we turn around, there's another fighting site up for this school. But thank you, because the progress you're already making, the fact that we're not, we're going to hold the bully accountable instead of penalizing the victim, I'm so thankful because our victims should not be penalized. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Burnett?
Yes, thank you. I'm encouraged to hear the program that you're starting, and it sounds very positive. One thing I would like to see with it as well is not just the anti-bullying, even though I know October is anti-bully month, but is increased kindness. So not just say we're anti-bully, but pro-kindness, I think speaks volumes in a positive manner as well.
Yeah, you know, it's great that we have October as the Bully Prevention Month and then Unity Day on October 20th, but you're right. We need to ensure that something's infused into daily lesson plans if we need to. I think that's where things are. You know, it's not just a one-hit wonder. It's not only bringing in those guest speakers to pump the kids up for three hours during everybody's lunch about bully prevention. You know, we've done that, I've done that. I've brought them into schools before, and it's a great message. They have an amazing message to share, but we need to ensure that there's something in the infrastructure to support the message throughout the entire year, every day.
We've talked about adding that, SEL as well as bullying as a part of the normal day function. If it's the beginning of the morning, just mention, be kind, you know, tolerate each other, just something that simple. Kids can just hear it first thing in the morning, and it could change their mindset by the next period when they were planning to bully someone. So we've asked them to do a positive message every morning through SEL time or whatever time it may be to address bullying and social emotional learning as well.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. Thank you. Mr. Persis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I also appreciate the comments Board members made and appreciate this program starting. The other thing I wanted to add that perhaps hasn't been said is we think of bullying sometimes of the physical aspect of it, but it's that social media name-calling torture that some of these students are going through, some of them daily, some of them over the weekend, some of them so upset that unfortunately they don't tell their parents. And they come to school just so, so sad, and they really don't know where to turn because they're afraid it's going to get worse if they say the wrong thing to the wrong person. So I know that you all know that.
Yes.
And how that works. But I remember, as you said, Ms. Burnett, about being kind, you know, there's just nothing better than the golden rule. I mean, just, you know, if, start today with that, you know? Do unto others as you would like others to do unto you. I mean, if we all just live by that, you know, just think about it. Golden rule, just be kind, be sensitive, be thoughtful, you know, let's all get along. But anyway, I just wanted to bring up that social media piece because that's the one that kind of scares me because it's silent. It's what you read on social media, people saying ugly things about you. That's hurtful.
Yes.
And you don't know how to come back, because if you even try to come back, then it gets even, a barrage comes back at you. So just make sure you guys are.
And Mr. Persis, cyberbullying is included in that, and a lot of times when cyberbullying happens, it involves law enforcement because it is happening off of our campuses, but cyberbullying is included as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. I remember when we added cyberbullying to our student code of conduct. That wasn't that long ago. And one other thing that I've encountered that I never thought of, but when I was teaching, I saw where the bullying was generational. Two parents didn't get along, and now the children are in the same classes, and they were told by their parents not to like each other. So thank you for addressing not just the what that's going on, but the why. Because I think only knowing why the behavior is there do we reach an understanding. And all of the strategies, the questioning, to reevaluate the bullying policies, establishing expectations, the issue of silence, and developing materials to educate. And your next meeting is the 13th of October. This is, I think, the most extensive investigation into anti-bullying and to understand why it happens. So thank you. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We're thrilled. Thank you, Dr. Fritz, for initiating this, and I can't think of two better people to handle it, so thank you.
Thanks, Rose. Thanks, Thomas.
Thank you for coming tonight. Dr. Fritz?
Our next recognition is extremely important. I think during the past year and a half, we have realized how important it is and what a role the school plays in taking care of one of our basic functions for our young people, which is feeding them. I'm incredibly proud of our Schoolway Cafe workers and everything that they've done for our students each and every day, but particularly during this time. You know, whether we have a hurricane or a crisis, our folks are there. You know, when our kids, when we were forced out of school on March 13th of 2020, our folks jumped up and they started feeding kids. They were driving into the communities, they were making it happen, and they do that today. They help out continuously. I'm very happy and pleased to announce that October 11th through the 25th is National School Lunch Week, and you know how personal this is to me with my own child who works in the cafeteria. They work hard. These people work hard every day, and they do it for our kids, so very happy about this. Our final recognition is another one that's very personal and exciting. October 1st through the 12th is the Florida Disability and History and Awareness Week. This recognition promotes awareness to the contributions of individuals with disabilities and what they've done in our community. Despite the fact that disability is a natural part of life, people with disabilities have not always had access to equal opportunities. In fact, not until 1975, with the passage of Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, did school-aged children with disabilities have rights to free and appropriate public education. I'm incredibly proud of the things that we're doing in Volusia County for our students. Several of them that I'd like to highlight, and I'm going to ask Ms. Wiles to come up and share a little bit because I think it's important. We have added supports for our students on the spectrum, and we have added supports at all levels. That means extra teachers, and we've made sure that we've done that over the last couple of years. We've also started the institution of Building Independent Living Skills, and we call these Life Labs, Living Independent for Everyone, which really gives our students an opportunity to practice those life skills that they will have at their homes. And in addition to that, we've partnered with other outside organizations such as Project Search. Well, we're doing our own Volusia Search this year. We will train students in jobs in the school district, those students that are super seniors that are ready to age out, will get job training right here in Volusia County Schools. Upon completion of that satisfactor, they will be hired into our system. So I wanted to have Ms. Wiles come up and share a little more about that because I think it's such a cool thing that our county is doing. Ms. Wiles?
Fritz, and thank you, Ms. Cuthbert and Board, for having me up tonight. Dr. Fritz highlighted many of the things that we're already doing, and I know, Mr. Persis, you joined me at many of the graduations, as did Dr. Fritz at the end of the year to celebrate our students in Project Search. We are looking to expand that and have something that we can grow here within Volusia County Schools and employ our students in our system. So we are working with Schoolway Cafe, we are working with maintenance, we are working at transportation to build in those opportunities for our students to gain work experience while at school. We have job coaches for them that will be side by side with them, making sure that they understand thoroughly the job skills that they need. They get to rotate through different aspects of the job to find what fits them and what they would like to see themselves doing. We are expanding Project Search as well. We're working with many companies, one of which is Boston Whaler. We were hoping to get that started this year. Unfortunately, COVID throws a wrench in everything, but they are committed to work with us and have our students out there. They already have the classroom ready for us to go as well. There were a couple of other things that I did want to highlight. Dr. Fritz mentioned our Life Labs. Our high schools have Life Labs, but we're looking to expand them. So the schools are asking for donations to help us do that. Obviously, it can be expensive. What we're envisioning is building an apartment situation at every high school because our students need to know how to keep house, right? Growing up, I learned how to keep house. That's how I became, when you graduate and you move out on your own, you need to know how to make your bed, how to do laundry, fold clothes, make sure that the kitchen's clean and safe, sanitized, as the bathrooms and all of those things. So we're looking to create that situation at every high school so that we can rotate our students through. There's actually a curriculum that we're going to purchase once we have them all set up and ready to go, and our teachers are excited about getting the opportunity to teach the students those very needed skills that they need when they leave us and get those jobs that we're also preparing them to get. I'm very excited to announce, just in the month of September, six of our students have gained full-time or part-time employment through Sodexo at Emory Riddle. We have a work-based learning experience and a community-based vocational education program that we do with Emory Riddle, and already this year, six students have gained employment that, you know, they're 20, 21, 22 years old, and they can work there well, you know, for 40 years if that's what they want. So we're very excited and happy. Emory Riddle has really been a great partner with us, as has Halifax, obviously, you know, with Project Search. So a lot of great things going on for our students with disabilities, and I'm happy to have the opportunity to highlight a few of those, so thank you.
Wow. Thank you, Ms. Wiles. Dr. Fritz? Anything else?
No, ma'am. I'm just very proud of where we're headed. Thank you. Thank you for your leadership, Ms. Wiles.
Okay. Do you mind if the Board has any questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wiles. Sorry. Any questions or comments? Ms. Haynes?
I'm going to put a plug in for you to Dr. Fritz. Dr. Fritz, we believe ESR3 funding is coming, and this is actually one of those things that, you know, I've said, we should take the ESR money.
Dr. Fritz, we believe S R three funding is coming and this is actually one of those things that, you know, I've said, we should take the S R money and fill the science labs and things like that that we don't normally have money for. So I'd like to encourage you that as S R three comes in, we look at funding these Life Labs for these students because that can kind of be a one-time, not all, not all items, but it could be a one-time thing where we could actually benefit from that money and help these kids. And I so appreciate everything and I really appreciate the partnership with Embry-Riddle because there's, you know, I've got students from different high schools that I have gotten to know over the past few years and they go to Embry-Riddle and it's, it's a highlight. I mean, those kids go over there and they come back and I appreciate what Embry-Riddle has done with partnering with us for those kids. And I, I love the whole thing about finding out what, what job we can find that they can do, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Anyway, Ms. Burnett?
So I get to see some of them at work at Halifax and they're workers, they are constantly working, they're always doing their job and very polite, so I just wanted to give them a shout out.
And the great thing about that is they rotate through all of the aspects of the hospital until they find their niche.
Right.
And, and once they find it, it's like, wow, you know, and they're so successful. So Halifax is amazing to work with. They, they really, they feed our kids, they give them shoes, they give them clothes, they just go above and beyond.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. Gentlemen? Ms. Pers- Mr. Persis?
Yeah, I, I just think it's timely to bring up what I had sent to you, I think, earlier today, Amanda, about extending the age, Dr. Fritz, of service. I know some states are starting to do it because of COVID for a one-year thing. And I just copied this down. In the state of New York, students with individualized education plans could extend their public school education until their, till age 23, up from age 21, 22, which is where we are. The extension would be given to students who weren't able to meet key learning and life skill goals because of education changes brought on during COVID mandated distant learning and other changes. My understanding is currently we have 17 students who are 21 and will turn 22 during this school year when, when they would normally age out. And so I just thought that, I know this would be some kind of a policy change or, or something that would have to be put on an agenda. And I think the, the rub with all this is that we only get funded through the age 21 or until they turn 22. But to Jamie's point, that to me would be like just the perfect use of COVID funds because it's, we are doing this only because of COVID. Not forever, but just maybe just for one year to help, to help a group if it's possible. I'm just bringing it up to Dr. Fritz and if he wants to put it on a future agenda or if Ms. Wiles does.
Thank you. Mr. Pennley and I have been discussing this and talking about the ramifications with funding, you know, absolutely we'll explore S R three to see if that would be appropriate use of those funds. And then, you know, it's, it is 17 kids.
Yeah.
You know, that are spread out amongst all of the high schools, so it's, it's, wouldn't be an undue burden necessarily. So it's something we certainly can consider, of course, taking, you know, into consideration, everything that we have to consider.
Great. Thank you, ma'am, chair.
Thank you. Mr. Cologne?
Good.
Okay.
It's awesome.
All right, thank you.
I, I, I'm reminded of the, the parable which the man goes on the beach and he picks up the clams or the mussels and he throws them back in the ocean. And somebody asks, why are you taking so much time just to throw one out when there's thousands? He said, well, it meant something to that one. And it's true, each and every one of those 17 are, are worth, worth the investment. So, and as well as all of our students, but these in particular. So I'm all for that, for your suggestion, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiles. Okay, Dr. Fritz?
Yes, I'd like to ask Ms. Lisa Snede to come forward. She's going to introduce our half-cent tax project oversight committee. And board members, I know you share the sentiment as they come forward. This is a voluntary service that these individuals do for us as a school system because they, they believe in the school system and they want to make sure that they're helping us. Again, voluntary service that takes a lot of time. And I, I know that you would like to certainly wish them, thank you. Ms. Snede, if you'd introduce the folks coming forward, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Good evening. Tonight we have Jacob Lamarz, am I pronouncing your name right? All right. And Jim, and he's with his own CPA firm, Charles Ballot and Associates. And then we have Mr. Jim Mathers, President of Patas Homes. And when we give the report, we'll also recognize the other committee members who are not here with us tonight, but these two gentlemen have agreed to give the presentation. And as Dr. Fritz mentioned, we're thankful for the volunteers who serve on this committee as it is quite a time commitment and they all do have very pretty, pretty big jobs, so thank you. So the project oversight committee, if we just scroll through this, sorry. Project Oversight Committee was formed by the school board and the superintendent to implement and track the progress of the penny, half penny sales tax referendum. And it consists of six private citizens that are not affiliated with or employed by any businesses or occupations that would have a direct or indirect financial benefit from the projects that we are doing. And we also have one member of the Volusia School Administration. The committee prepares an annual report, which has to be submitted to the board 90 days at the end of the fiscal year. So we're, we're meeting that deadline tonight by getting it in before the 30th of September. The other committee members that we have are Mr. Mitch Attend, Director of CRM, Sandy Burke Bishop, Florida Real Estate Broker with Top Shelf Properties, Mr. Ben Flowers, served on the committee this past year, however, he stepped down on May of 2021. And then we have Mr. Jason Meyer, the founder and CEO of Synergy Billing, and Greg Ubinski also served on the committee over the past year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to these fine gentlemen to give us the presentation update.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having us. Dr. Fritz and school board members, this was a busy year, like I guess most others have been, but this one was just a little bit different. We, even with the challenges we've had, we stayed on track and had regular monthly meetings throughout the year to review the upcoming projects and, and current projects and their statuses as they move forward. As part of the original replacement school, or I'm sorry, the, the original list presented to the public, it, it involved a lot of different projects of a lot of different facets, including replacement schools, renovations, technology upgrades, security upgrades, and, and then we always have those external influences that, that come about as, as time moves on. The next slide here is, is an update of what was approved versus what's been spent to date so far over the last five years throughout the, the current sales tax referendum that was voted in 2014. You can see a total of $480 million was the estimated grand total for, of what was projected to come in and be spent for the referendum. Of that, about just over half of that has been, has been spent to date, as you can see on the, the slide. You're, you're familiar with the, the current list, but the internal and external influences and, and things that come to us on a, on a regular basis with, with changes is, is something that is often, folks wonder, wonder what we go through and what we talk about when we meet. And these internal and external influences, obviously the pandemic is not one that we have to, to explain a whole lot about. But when it comes to, to capital projects, it does change things a little bit, including construction delays, material shortages, increased costs, things of that nature are a big, are a big external influence that none of us have any control over that, that has really put a toll on, on the department over the last year and they've, they've had to, they've had to juggle quite a bit dealing with those things. So definitely, obviously the COVID-19 pandemic has, has played a part in some of those, those influences. Obviously as well, turnover throughout the, the school board, there, there's been some turnover in the cabinet and with the system. The, the new hires that have come on have, have continued to be as transparent as, as the old and, and are getting up to speed and keeping us updated as we need to be updated. But we recognize that, that that is a definite influence over the department and can definitely, can definitely take its toll on the department over the course of the year. So something definitely be recognized for, for the facilities department. On a positive note, we were forced, or not we, we as a school, school district was forced to speed up the one-to-one technology initiative, which distributing over 30,000 laptops over the course of the last year, two years ago would have been a, a dream. And, and they, the department made it happen in, in a very expedited and short period of time and has helped the district vastly get over some of those pandemic-related influences that we talked about. And then, and then delayed maintenance of major systems is, is something that, that readers had a little bit over the last, the last year. And those are things that, that are being, being caught up and, and being dealt with and, but definitely things that weren't foreseen when the, when the initiative was, was brought in. So, so those are also things that are, that are being dealt with. And just the, the last year, it's, it's been, it's been a year of adaption and resiliency. The fortitude of the students and the teachers is a direct reflection of the strong community that we have, the strong district that we have. And it's, it's humbling and uplifting to hear stories of success like we've heard tonight and, and the way students are, are getting through and teachers and the district is getting through what, what we've gone through over the last year. We've had to be creative, flexible, versatile, and, and all those things are happening to help move forward. Our role as an oversight committee is strictly that, it's, it's to be involved and updated on the capital improvement projects that were presented to the general public back in 2014 when that initiative was voted in. And just to make suggestions and guidelines and recommendations to, to you, the school board, because ultimately those decisions are in your hands. So we are extremely happy with, with the transparency that, that the school board, I'm sorry, the district provides us in, in our regular meetings and they, they continue to give regular updates on construction projects and the, the different facets of the, of what the half-ten, half-cent school, sorry, half-cent sales tax covers. Jake, anything to add?
As Jim said and, sorry, you all know, it's been a challenging year from, from many standpoints, especially with the pandemic and such. We've had some delays on, on some of the projects, but I think we're, we're making progress moving forward. Daytona Middle, the Ortona-Osceola, I think we're all moving ahead in the right direction. External things we cannot control, pandemic, material costs are skyrocketing. But with all that being said, I, I mean, we've, we've had a, a lot of bright things come over the past year. I, I think one thing that we projected 45 million in, in revenues coming in, we had over 50. So I mean, that was a very pleasant surprise to have a, an excess of, of 5 million come in. As Jim alluded to, I think there was over 33,000 laptops distributed to the, to the students. So just with everything happening and, and all the challenges and the, the turnover and, and just everything all together, that being said, I, I think it was a, a, a positive year overall and the future is, is from our standpoint as an oversight committee is, is very bright.
Okay, I, so again, I want to thank you gentlemen and the committee. I also want to thank Dr. Shanoff and his department because they're definitely the ones who do the work behind these projects and Dolly Viderman also, who's excellent at kind of bringing me up to speed in the role of this committee and all of the, the different facets that it takes and she, she does a great job with that. So that's, that's all I have. Do you all have any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Snede. Dr. Fritz, is that all right?
Thank you very much. I appreciate your partnership, we need you. We, we recognize we, we cut you a big check to do this job, so. Thank you, thank you very much for dedication, your time and your expertise and working with our, our team.
Comments from the board? Thank you, Dr. Fritz. Yes, Mr. Cologne?
Thank you guys for your service. I know not only do you deserve a raise, so we'll throw that in the next budget note, a penny is a raise, but I know you guys go on beyond the scope to ensure that the money is spent appropriately. So again, thank you for volunteering your time to yourself and all the other members of this board who, oversight committee who also spend their time to do that, so thank you.
Mr. Persis?
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't say this and this board's tired of me saying it, but as we look at that 2014, 15 list of schools, there's only one school that hasn't started yet from that original list. Do we all know the name of that school?
Enterprise.
So if we could get that, that school started as soon as possible, that would be great. And I know we have to wait for Beachside to move out and, and get that going, so I am, I am hoping Beachside stays on track and, and you, I don't know, would you guys monitor that schedule too? How they're doing, Jim? Maybe you could?
So, yeah, we, we don't take an active part in, in monitoring that schedule. We take the projects that are presented to us and, and offer our, our opinions and as much guidance as we can from the general public on behalf of the general public. But as far as the order that, that things go in and, and the timing that it happens is more of a staff, that, that's, that's what they do every day.
Got it.
So, so we're, we're just on board to help kind of give guidance wherever we can.
Yeah, and as Jacob said, the, the good news obviously is that more money is coming in than what we had originally thought, even through the, the pandemic. So that helps to offset those increased costs that are also coming in, so it's all good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Persis. Ladies, yes, Ms. Burnett?
I just want to thank you because I know it's a lot of time out of your day to, to spend time, whether it's every day or monthly, you still spend a lot of time preparing for, for meeting and spend a lot of time talking to the community, so thank you for advocating for us.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes.
I want to, I too want to reiterate thank you because, and I know thank you's not really enough because you've, you've taken time away from your families and other opportunities that you might have to be able to serve on this committee and be the liaison between us and the community. But what I find so compelling that I think people need to know is not only do you volunteer for this, but you make sure that we stay in line with exactly what we told the community we were going to do when we asked them to approve that half-cent sales tax. And I think that's so important because the transparency piece is there and we're using the funding for what we exactly said we would do for it, so thank you so much.
Thank you. I, I want to address something a little different. I read your annual report. I found it very honest, very accurate, and I don't know who put it all together, but it took many, many hours. And I want to say thank you for the accountability that you put on our shoulders. And if you don't mind, I'd like to read the second paragraph in your committee's recommendations and conclusions. I think the public would like to hear it. "The public oversight committee, as appointed representatives of the citizens of Volusia County are tasked with providing oversight of the spending of funds generated by the half-cent sales tax as committed by the citizens of Volusia County. We bear no responsibility for the spending and are only entrusted with ensuring the Volusia County School Board and the district staff remain accountable to the citizens of Volusia County. We ensure that the district's capital spending remains in accordance with the original capital project list presented and approved by voters in 2014 and it went into effect January 2019." Wasn't it 2019?
2017.
2017, I knew it was an odd number, thank you. Ultimately, these spending decisions remain with the members of the Volusia County School Board. The project oversight committee holds this as the foundation of our oversight and strive to remain adequately informed of all decisions regarding the spending of these funds. By doing this, we can provide- By doing this, we can provide assurance to the voters that they get what they paid for though through our half-cent sales tax. And I also want to say thank you. I know there's been some, in the past, there's some difficulty with when you're meeting and when the district is meeting with you. I hope we continue to work with them and not just tell them what we're doing and just say, here it is, take it or leave it. I firmly believe in this oversight committee. I value your work. I mean, it's just far and beyond. It should be put engraved on your backs with tattoos, "I served on the oversight committee." It's that very important and long-lasting. But as long as we work together and consult you about future projects, instead of telling you, this is what we've done, we're just telling you what we've done. That's not what the job of the oversight committee does. So I hope as we move forward in this year, when we have a little more time maybe to, you know, not have to do things so quickly, that we work with you and bring the projects to you to consult with you ahead of time before we make those final decisions. And I know our technology and our operations department, as well as our finance department, can do that with you. So I, from the bottom of our hearts, I don't think there's, I don't think we can very much say thank you enough of your dedication because without you and this project oversight committee, we wouldn't have a half-cent sales tax. And that's why on all of our, almost all of our rebuilds and some of our renovations, we put, this is what your half-cent sales taxes do, we put that banner up to advertise. And we should also put on our future banners as, you know, Oversight Committee Project or Oversight Committee Understood or Accepted or Something Approved by the Oversight Committee. Unless you don't want the advertising.
Well, that's appreciated. It's the public's money and it's the public's dollars. And so everyone that spends money in Volusia County pays for those schools. And so that's, that's who deserves the credit.
Oh, absolutely. And it's through their generosity that we're able to provide the schools that we are able to. So thank you for your part in making all that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Fritz.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, that was the amended agenda. We brought 19.01 forward. Now we will go to 5.01, public participation at 6:30 certain. And it's, we're about 11 minutes late. Ms. Schultz, do we have any cards? Okay, we're hearing public participation that have to do with the general issues of education in our school district. We have 15 minutes set aside. I will read the first person to come forward. You have three minutes to speak. As soon as the three minutes is over, your time is over and it's time for the next person to speak. So I will say, the first person and the second person, so the second person can come up. Make sure you're speaking into the microphone. State your name as well as the area of the county you are from. So Elizabeth Albert is first and then Scott Cleary. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Fritz, members of the audience. I'd like to speak with you today about priorities and the crisis that is currently occurring within Volusia County schools. As you know, we have a substantial number of vacancies in our schools and our work sites. The HR update that will be provided this evening is very interesting, but as was pointed out in a previous board meeting, numbers can be made to show a variety of outcomes. I'd like to remind you that each one of those numbers, the averages and the percents, equate to students who are not being taught by a certified teacher or receiving supports from an educational support professional. Although the data will be presented in a manner that would lead you to believe that the 108 instructional vacancies and the 129 support vacancies are evenly spread throughout the districts, I wonder how that data would look if it were provided in a school-by-school breakdown. Certainly, D5 with 29 instructional vacancies and only 15 schools is sure to look very different than the others. So further, please recognize that the educational professionals currently working in our schools are doing yeoman's work to provide the highest quality academic instruction and supports to our students. It's time that the board and the district begin to recognize the sacrifices and dedication of our current employees. I am not a fan of using tricks and gimmicks like hiring bonuses for potential employees while our current employees continue to suffer and fall further behind. There is no greater crisis than not being able to provide a certified teacher or educational support professional to our students. It is time to stop talking about making things better and to actually prioritize those who are doing the work. We must realize that without our educational professionals, our systems will fail and that our clients, our parents, will seek other options. We're not going to need to worry about the parents' bill of rights or school choice because we won't be able to provide what they need for their students, for their children, and they will go elsewhere. We are not competitive with other districts or the private sector. Our teachers are looking to leave to work in other districts and our support professionals are looking to work in the private sector. We can't compete with the wages and benefits that are being offered in other places. So you know this guy, right? $12 to start if you're a crew member, $15 if you're a manager. You guys know where this is, $15 to start plus benefits. You all should know what this is. They come to some of our houses almost every single day, particularly mine. They're starting at $16 an hour. And the one, I'm the biggest fan of all, right down the street from us, Mr. Persis?
Yes.
Right? And this is no joke, starting at $15 an hour for cashiers with a 401K, three weeks paid vacation and benefits. Now let's talk about school districts. We are the lowest school district in, I got 25 seconds, in central Florida with 44, 335 for our instructional folks, Lake, 44, 750, Seminole, 46, 310, Flagler, 47, 5, Orange, 47, 5, Osceola, 46, 1. My point here is this, we have to retain the people that we have, the people that are sacrificing and doing what we need them to do. We've got to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albert. Mr. Scott Cleary and then Dr. Jerry Pickett. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Fritz. Two weeks ago, you made some decisions and I've been kind of thinking about them since then. And while I could say many things, I want to bring something up that was often expounded upon by Dr. Caldwell, who you may well remember, that was unintended curriculum. When less than one-fourth of our students have in fact opted out, I'm concerned we have taught that the minority can terrorize the majority to act from position of fear. Moreover, I'm concerned about something else. Something, a discussion earlier this year between either Mr. Persis or Mr. Cologne and Attorney Doran, that in essence, the advice of counsel was that maintaining federal guidelines would shield this district from liability. Now with the functional end of quarantine protocols, I wonder what unintended consequences we may yet face. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cleary. Dr. Jerry Pickett and then Kelly Faust. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, community group, business partners, superintendent of schools. Again, I come before the board to express my concerns as related to the success of all focus in struggling schools, as well as the educational inequalities and discrimination of minorities as related to Volusia County schools, leadership and instructional faculty. Superintendent, we need you to take a stand for what is right for everyone. You were chosen for a reason and for that very reason, you should challenge yourself to lead with the highest level of conviction, honesty, integrity and character that you can demonstrate. As a former principal at Campbell Middle School, I served during the most critical time in the history of the school. That was based on Jerry Pickett, the person. The district wanted me to lead on my own conviction, being monitored closely by the state. Come, and I would also add, to assess my decisions and the results, to report on record by the state their findings. So I'm asking the superintendent, if you were in a situation as such, what would you do? Mr. Willie Williams, 29 years of service, hands down, one of the most impactful school leaders in Volusia County. We allowed the system to fail him, the same system that's going to eventually change the grading system in the state of Florida. Currently as an assistant principal, he still upholds what he represents as a Volusia County Schools leader. I think leadership needs to take this situation and make it right. So I ask Dr. Fritz, if this person was you, what would you do? Dr. Stephanie Owens, an administrator that worked alongside me at Campbell Middle, strong leader, very compassionate, loved the kids, outstanding ESE knowledge, named ESE AP of the Year. And I asked, how could a person with those accolades all of a sudden not understand her job? So I asked, if this person was Mrs. Fritz, what would you do? And finally, Takiya D. Pickett, my wife, 20-year educator, and yes, one of her curriculum roles is testing. Led and have served at Sheerese High School, 28 years. She's been a reading coach and she's served at multiple levels at the school. Now all of a sudden, Dr. Fritz, she doesn't meet the expectation to serve as a school administrator at the end of her career. So I'm asking you, as the superintendent, if this was Mrs. Fritz, and I'm sorry, what would you do? So I conclude by saying, history tells us, in the most critical times and the toughest situations, the very best leaders are able to get the best results for the greater good. I'm asking you, make the right choice.
Thank you, Dr. Pickett. Ms. Kelly Faust and then Willie Williams. Good evening.
Good evening. Before I start, I want to tell you guys...
Okay, make sure you speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
I've never done this before. So I'm a serious rookie here.
Okay, state your name, the area of the county you're from, and then you have your three minutes.
Okay, my name is Kelly Faust and I live in Deland, Florida, in Volusia County.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Okay, am I doing good so far?
You're fine.
All right. I'm so nervous.
That's okay.
But, all right, I'm trying to take deep breaths here. What I wanted to come and talk to all of you about is the employee mask mandate that you guys have gone on right now. And I, it doesn't affect me personally, but my husband is an employee here. And while he's not a teacher, he works in a different area altogether. He's a mechanic. So being a mechanic, he's working on cars, buses, every, and all kinds of vehicles. And so sometimes he could be in a bus, in a car, have his head stuck inside an engine or underneath, you know, looking at the chassis and all kinds of pieces, parts. And it's been a tough year and a half doing that because of COVID and the masks and everything. When the masks were off, it was okay. Now that the masks are back on for the employees, it's tough because of the type of manual labor that he's doing. And he'll come home and he's got a couple cloth masks, he'll put them in his little blue bucket, wash them out and hang dry them and use them again for the week and everything. So I know he's not a teacher and I know everybody seems to be super, you know, focused, you know, teaching and everything like that. But you got to think about the non-teachers too. I mean, the people who are, you know, working on the cars and the buses and everything like that. And it takes a toll on him. He has to stop, he has to take extra time, he has difficulties breathing and focusing and getting legged and, excuse me. And so I know you've got something coming, some kind of, I'm not all familiar with it, some kind of review coming up in October. So I'm just kind of hoping that you'll take that into consideration and kind of let the employees have the option of wearing a mask or not. But like I said, you know, I see this every day and, you know, I witness it every day. And my husband's not the only mechanic that works for districts, so I'm quite sure that everybody who's a mechanic or, you know, warehouse person or maintenance person has the same struggles. So I just thought I'd come and explain and hope that...
Thank you, Mrs. Faust. We heard you loud and clear. Thank you so very much and we appreciate you coming here tonight. Thank you very much, ma'am. Mr. Williams? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair. Excuse me. Greetings to Madam Chair Lynda Cuthbert, school board members, Superintendent Dr. Fritz. My name is Willie F. Williams, Jr., and I live in Daytona Beach. At the last meeting at the end of my remarks, Madam Chair commented that the Rosa Parks book will be a part of the agenda conference. I was hopeful that we would get a complete and full investigation into why the book was pulled at tonight's meeting. I will repeat again, the decision to pull the Rosa Parks book by Eloise Greenfield was the worst decision in the 29 years I've been an educator. Again, this is not the union's fault. Putting the book back does not solve the issue. I exchanged emails with Dr. Balgobin about my concern with the book being pulled. I feel as if I was dismissed as someone who did not matter. I asked Dr. Balgobin, did we order the book on Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune, also by Eloise Greenfield, and still have gotten no response. This is what happens in a district that gives lip service to equity, diversity and inclusion. It is not lost on me when I see we have no black representation on the school board. If this issue with Rosa Parks is not transparently investigated before the board, this board has lost all credibility. With the assault on educational freedom and all the talk around teaching critical race theory and the whitewashing of history, I can't believe you could miss this badly on this decision. This is how the racist incident in Ormond Beach Middle School happens. A substitute teacher and a hayman activity with the N-word spelled out and being encouraged by white students in the class while two black male students have to endure this trauma. If one of the young scholars had not taken out his phone and snapped a picture and showed his mother, I wonder if we would have heard anything about it. This is how so many black educators don't see any future in this district because our superintendent has a process that favors his friends and privilege more than qualification. I sent an email to Dr. Fritz asking about the process for the Campbell Middle School principal job. He touted communication and transparency. Let's be clear, I love Principal Matthews. She came to Spartan County as a teacher a few years after I started. I support her 100%. I asked about the process since I applied for the job and did not get an interview. Then there was a big secret as to who was on the interview committee and who were the applicants and when were they interviewed. I heard nothing. So I did a public records request, found out who was on the committee, and six applicants, but only one, Kimberly Matthews, was interviewed on Teams on August 23rd at 1:00 PM. Now you say community is important. I grew up in South Street, South Side for life, baby. I went to Campbell as a student, came back to Campbell as a teacher. The spirit of the number one Spartan, Earl C. McCray, and Papa Spartan, Stanley H. Whittit, runs through my veins. And I don't get an interview? The people on the committee didn't ask any question as to why only one person was interviewed? Crushing. Dr. Igma X. Kendi, in his book, How to Be an Anti-Racist, talks about racist policies and people who wield racist power. If we ought to change the current state of our community, then we have to be actively anti-racist. You're either a segregationist, a assimilationist, or an anti-racist. Why am I outraged? Look at our world right now. History will record where you stood in this moment. As for me, I'm an anti-racist, learning all I can to make my community better. We've got to do better. Thank you and to God be the glory.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. At this time, this concludes public participation. We've had our 15 minutes. We will have a 10-minute break. Thank you. We'll be back in 10 minutes. Thank you. We'll be back in 10 minutes. Thank you for coming back. We will resume our meeting. 5.01, Public Participation Concerning Items for the Consent Agenda. Ms. Schultz, do we have any cards for the consent agenda? Okay, we have one card. Mr. Williams, you want to address 15.03 on our consent agenda. Let me look. Let me get that read for you, sir. 15.03 is the approval of the Superintendent's 2122 Evaluation Instrument. You have three minutes, sir.
Excellent, thank you. Greetings to Madam, greetings to Madam Chair Lynda Cuthbert, School Board Member, Superintendent Dr. Fritz. My name is Willie Frank Williams, Jr., and I live in Daytona Beach. I'm here tonight to speak on the Board Action Item 15.03, Approval of Superintendent's 2021-22 Evaluation Instrument. The purpose, to assess the performance of the superintendent during the contract year with regard to the following areas of competency: high-quality instruction, high-quality staff, safe and supportive environment, resources and operational processes, communication and community engagement, effective board relations. I know that these errors mirrored the strategic plan with the addition of effective board relations. My first noticing after reviewing the metrics for success is that they are too low, in my opinion. Superintendent Fritz says with confidence that one of the reasons he was hired as superintendent is that he has a track record of moving schools as it relates to student achievement. Let's see it represented in his evaluation. For example, Category 1, High-Quality Instruction, Performance Indicators, 1.1. Improve district grade from 52% for school year 2021 to 54% school year 2122. Way too low a bar, in my opinion. The goal is an A, correct? On our way to an A, the Volusia way, 62% should be the bar for this year. Category 2, High-Quality Staff, should add this statement on the end of Performance Indicators, 2.1 to 2.5, that focusing intentionally on equity, diversity, and inclusion. Category 3, Safe and Supportive Environment, should add this statement at the end of Performance Indicators, 3.1 to 3.4, with a focus on equity, diversity, and inclusion to disrupt the school-to-prison pipeline, especially for our Black and Brown students, with additional intensity on our males. Category 5, Community Communication and Community Engagement, Performance Indicators, 5.1 to 5.5, should add this statement, especially in and with our marginalized communities. I believe the bar is also low on Superintendent's Contract Performance Goals Number 1 Academics. I think you know I don't believe in the grading system. Schools are so much more than grades. This system historically measures income over competence. Standardized tests only perpetuates the narrative that a class system exists where marginalized communities suffer. But it's a system we have for now, so the bar should be, every elementary, middle, or high school is either an A or B. Every metric starts at the B level. In my view, we can't send the message that a C is acceptable. For example, the metric all elementary schools will have learning gains in reading and math with the lowest quartile students of 42% or higher. Black and Brown and students with disabilities overwhelmingly make up the students in the lowest quartile. Are we sending a message, we are okay with them at the C level? 54% should be a minimum expectation for every group. I believe every employee last year in Volusia County Schools had a formal evaluation except the superintendent. If the superintendent says that student achievement is why he was hired, I believe his evaluation instruments should reflect his level of expertise. Thank you so much, and to God be the glory.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Okay, would you please give it to Ms. Leeben, please? Thank you, sir. Okay, 6.01, are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? Dr. Fritz, you have any?
Ma'am.
Any board recommendations? Yes, Ms. Haynes?
I would just like to make a comment about item 9.02.
902, Application of Pathways to Career Opportunities Grant?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Because this is in the consent agenda, I was afraid that people may not, like, notice it. And so I wanted to draw attention to this because I think it's very. And so I wanted to draw attention to this because I think it's very important that our students and parents and community members hear what this application is for. We were very fortunate at the beginning of this school year to go out to Pine Ridge High School, where we opened up the HVAC program. And when Mr. Cologne and I joined the school board, it was very apparent that the west side of the county didn't necessarily always have the same offerings as the east side of the county. And I want to just say thank you to everyone that has worked on this grant and is submitting it, because this is actually going to impact another one of our schools on the west side of the county, as well as a school on the east side of the county. And this is something that we need to move into. And so for those that are listening from home and maybe have not opened up, you know, the multiple attachments for this, we're looking at adding an electrical academy piece that will allow a pre-apprenticeship. And I really want to say thank you to all of our local electrical companies that have stepped forth to say that they will support us in this and that they are willing to employ our students when they finish this program and help them with the next step, which would be their apprenticeship to become electricians, because this is a need in our community. I don't know if anyone's tried to get an electrician lately to do anything at their home or their business, but it's very difficult. And so I am so appreciative, and I'm hoping that this goes through and that we are awarded this, because it's going to impact Mainland High School on the east side of the county, and it's going to impact Taylor Middle High on this side of the county. And Taylor is that place that we all know because of its size. Lots of times it gets overlooked. And so I'm very thankful and I appreciate Mrs. Castelli and all of the work her and her team have done, and anyone else that has worked on this. And so I think we've just got to make sure that it comes through, because this is another thing that our kids deserve. And I just didn't want it to be overlooked by being buried in the consent.
I totally agree.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. Any other comments? Okay, then, six point zero two, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda as presented.
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Ruben Cologne and seconded by Mr. Carl Persis to accept the consent agenda as written and read. Any other further comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those disapprove, please say nay. The consent agenda has been approved. Thank you very much. Sixteen point zero one, the superintendent's announcements and comments.
Just two quick ones. Tuesday, October 12th, at ten a.m., we will have a workshop here in this boardroom. And then our regularly scheduled board meeting will be at three thirty, also on the 12th. I'm Chair, back to you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's see, eighteen point zero one, human resources update. Dr. Fritz?
I'm going to ask Mr. West to come forward, and as he does, let me share with the board that, as you know, I was with fellow superintendents last Thursday and Friday, as well as Dr. Boglum. And I'm going to share with you that the conversation is vacancies. It's been very different than in the past. There's been other conversations that happened, but that really has been the flavor, if you will. And we are not immune to them, I'm going to tell you. We're not immune to vacancies. There are a variety of reasons, but it is not specific just to Volusia County. And so some of the things that Mr. West is going to talk to you about today are some of the initiatives that we are putting in to help mitigate some of those vacancies. But again, you know, this is one that's plaguing our profession, not just even the state of Florida. It's difficult to get people to go into this profession in all areas, and it's becoming more and more difficult. And when I was talking to one of my cabinet members about this yesterday, the comment was made, this didn't start last year, this started five years ago. And that's, truer words could not have been said. So Mr. West is going to go through a little bit with us today. Mr. West?
Thank you, Dr. Fritz, and thank you, board members, for having the opportunity to come tonight. And obviously, I thank you, Ms. Albert, for bringing up the significance of what this issue is in regards to human capital, because I think everybody, it's on everyone's mind. It's something that's significant, we know, because having highly qualified employees in front of our students and doing the jobs that they need to do throughout the district is critical. So I appreciate you giving me this opportunity and this time to come every board meeting and report out to you. And of course, I'm going to go ahead and through the slides here, and so that is... There it is. Sorry about that. It's based, of course, on our enrollment, and our students that are here in our district this year as compared to last year. You're going to notice we have about fifty-nine hundred more students here than we had last year. That's a good problem to have, but that also means, of course, that we have, need more teachers and in front of our students and more employees to support those teachers. Of course, you're familiar with what the information that we put before you. I just want to take a second to acknowledge the efforts and the data that's being collected around this. And I'm going to single out Ms. Hazel tonight, because you all know she does a phenomenal job all the time. But she specifically calls every principal every week to get you this information. And what I don't show at the board meeting, but of course each of you do get at the end of each week, is every vacancy that you have broken down by school. So this is just kind of a summary of what it is that I share at the board for the public's consumption and that sort of thing. But you have that information each week, and we like to just go over the numbers. We're not trying to hide anything. We're trying to be as transparent as possible to make sure that you have the information in front of you. It is true, when we take a look at the numbers, the number that we have here, and we've broken it down for you for classroom vacancies, and you see district-wide, it's currently at seventy-seven. But the encouraging thing that, along those lines, is that we've actually hired twenty-one, or, excuse me, filled twenty-one of those vacancies. And by the way, I'm going to mention this a little later on, that's in addition to whoever has left in the meantime. So we're actually, on the positive side, twenty-one people. So we'll talk a little bit more about how LOAs and resignations have affected us this year as well. We do have our non-classroom vacant, non-classroom instructional vacancies as well. And you'll notice those vacancies have actually gone up. So what is typically, or what we have seen has happened is, our principals have, like, resolved ourselves, and the teachers have said, I would rather fill a classroom vacancy than sit in a coaching position all year long with the opportunity of possibly not having a teacher go into that vacancy. So that's why those numbers are the way that they are. And then, of course, our support vacancies, as Ms. Albert mentioned, about a hundred and twenty-nine vacancies that we have across the district. And I'm going to tell you, about a little over a hundred of those are para-professionals. So those are an area that we are really definitely hitting and looking to see what we could do to improve. So as we go through each district, you're going to notice, of course, Ms. Haynes there with District One, it hasn't broken out, and what we have there. I want you to also keep in mind, as we're going through each one, this is including the additional allocations that we added in the last, or since school started. As Ms. Wiles stood up and came up and talked about what we're doing to support our ESC students as well, we have added a number of allocations to support our ESC students, including paras as well. So that kind of contributes to some of those vacancies. The encouraging news, okay, that's not here, we have thirty schools with no classroom vacancies, zero, okay? And that is a positive thing. That's the hard work of the principals that are out there right now to make sure that those classroom vacancies are filled. We have nineteen schools that have no instructional vacancies at all in their schools. So our principals are working hard, and they are doing what they need to try to get those vacancies filled. I don't need to go through each district here, because I know that you all have seen this data, but as we go through District Two, we'll notice that we have thirteen classroom vacancies there. In District Three, eleven classroom vacancies. Once again, those support vacancies are those areas, those hot topics that we're looking at with eighteen in District Three. District Four, seventeen classroom vacancies and eighteen support vacancies across the schools. And of course, in District Five, as Ms. Albert mentioned before, we have fourteen classroom vacancies, but in addition to those non-classroom vacancies of fifteen, that is twenty-nine instructional vacancies in District Five. But once again, I'll point you to the support vacancies as a concern there with twenty-eight as well. So we obviously have been working, and I want to share a little bit with our recruitment office, because what I was going to say, and one of the things that we've really worked on is not just hiring teachers, because you'll notice, last year, we hired three hundred and fifty-five teachers by this time last year. This year, we've actually hired four hundred and seventy-five. So even though we've hired a hundred and twenty teachers more than we did last year, let me share with you some more disturbing news, okay? And that is, when we take into account our leave of absences combined with our resignations, okay? Last year, we had two hundred and fifty-one LOAs and resignations for the period that we're at right now. This year, we're up to three hundred and forty-one. So you'll see, we're still on the upside. We've hired, we're on the plus side of about thirty teachers more than we were last year. But we're having a hard time, because I feel like we take two steps forward and one step back, with not only recruitment but retention as well. So we are working to try to get our teachers here and to stay. We have taken another step that has not been done before, and that is our centralized hiring. And you'll see that we've interviewed a number of the folks that are out there that are qualified for these vacancies, particularly in ESC, our critical shortage areas, our science, our math, our ELA. And we've been able to offer positions to a number of those candidates. Now, for the candidates that actually have accepted and have come in, there are not as many as we would like, but hey, it's like Ms. Cuthbert said about that starfish, it's one at a time, right? Absolutely. So what I do want to do is talk to you a little bit about the para-professionals, because this is a situation that we're recognizing as somewhat, it's, I don't want to say it's dire, but it is an area that needs our focus and our attention. And what I'm going to talk about a little bit is not really tricks or gimmicks, but it really is about what we're trying to do to recruit folks from outside, to get them to come to our district and to do the job that possibly they want to do. We have offered an MOU to both unions in regards to not only a signing bonus for anybody that comes on, but also, I'll call it a finder's fee bonus, for our current existing employees. So we've offered that MOU to both of our unions. The ASME has agreed to that already, and we are undergoing that and moving forward with that with our bus drivers and our bus attendants. We're working with the View to hopefully sign that MOU for our para-professionals, because we recognize that is a definite need. In addition, of course, we are in negotiations to look to see what we could do for salaries as well. But an area that we've been working on, and we've actually met with a couple of companies this past week in looking at our substitutes and potentially trying to enhance what we're doing with our substitutes. And there are staffing companies that are out there that will help us with providing subs. What I found was very interesting was that when we started talking to both of these staffing companies, they asked us, well, what's your fill rate right now? And when we told them, they're like, oh, well, that's actually higher than our fill rate. So I actually had Rachel gather some information for you on our substitutes, and it's a single piece of paper here. And it actually tells you by day, since the start of the school year, what our sub-fill rate was for the school district. And you'll see our average is about eighty-two point three percent. Those companies that I was talking about has been hovering around the seventies. So I think the recognition, as Dr. Fritz kind of mentioned it, was that this year is a very difficult year for all companies, and by the way, not just education. This is across the board. But we are looking to do some things to try to encourage our substitute fill rate, not just our teacher subs, but our para-subs as well. So I've established a committee of principals, because I will tell you, they have some great ideas of what we can do. You know, from looking to see what we can do to the actual sub-pay rate, and we have comparisons to what other districts are doing, to potentially providing some sort of maybe benefits to them, stealing that from some of those staffing companies. You know, we would look at the status of what they are and see what we could do to provide some additional benefits to our substitutes. So you'll be seeing some things that I'm going to be bringing to you all, hopefully by the end of October. That's going to help truly incentivize what we want to do with our subs. So that really is the presentation that I have tonight. It's not all rosy, but it is what it is. And we are all working very hard to do what we can to get our qualified employees in front of our students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Yes, Ms. Haynes?
So I actually had written an email and asked for a lot of different data on these topics, because this is one of the things I wanted to speak about this evening, and what is happening. Because even, and I don't know if they gave, I don't think they sent to each of you everything, so that's a thing that I'd like to bring up right now first. Mr. Doran, we've talked about this before. If one of us asks for some data, you know, via email or whatever, such as asking for how many vacancies there are in different categories, what's our sub-fill rate? You know, I mean, I have the whole list. I thought that we had had an agreement that if I asked for something, or Mr. Persis asked for something, that when we got the response, the response would come back to all of us so that we could all see what the question was that was asked, and we would all have access to the data. Is that accurate?
Well, that's certainly accurate as far as the information that's requested of me. But as far as the district, I think that's been the practice, but I don't...
Well, let me jump in here. I'm sorry, Ms. Haynes. When some, the information that you asked today, we just tried to pull it together as quickly as possible. And so you did send an email requesting a number of different items, and that was on me, because I basically just gathered the information from a number of sources and sent it right back to you, because I wasn't exactly sure what you needed. But I can definitely share that with the remainder of the board. I was not trying to keep it from anyone, but...
No, and I wasn't actually referring to today's, because you did that very quickly, okay? And I didn't even know that it would be done that quickly, and I appreciate how quickly you did it. I was just referring to other items, you know, because we sometimes learn, and that's why, you know, I brought my questions, because I didn't, I wanted to be transparent, that I asked these questions and I asked for this data. I just know that at other times at board meetings, it's been brought up by a board member where they asked a question and they have data, and then the rest of us don't have that data. And so I just would like to reiterate that, you know, we establish a practice, because the way that we can all work together the best is if we know what questions have been asked and we all receive the data. And so I do know, Mr. Doran, that if we ask you a question, you provide it to all of us. And I would just like the same courtesy to happen when we're asking district staff for data. And I'm not referencing you today, because you didn't have much of a turnaround time for this. But I did, I asked for data. I asked about this sub-fill rate. I asked about how many substitutes we had that were active at this time versus substitutes that are inactive. You know, how many, you know, what was our fill rate looking like each day at schools? Because I've started hearing from some parents where children are missing two and three class periods. either sitting in the media center, the gymnasium, or the auditorium because there's no substitutes or there's no classroom teacher. So that's why, even though, and I have to say a big thank you to Ms. Hazel because she sent me mine on Sunday evening. And I thought, here she is on a Sunday giving up her time to send me a chart that shows by school, each vacancy and what the vacancy category is. So I thank Ms. Hazel for that. As I said, this is the best data we've ever received. And I know we're all appreciative for receiving that. And I know that she's taking, giving up her weekend to do this. So I thank her for that. But one of the primary focuses, and I know I was not the only board member that had this focus when I came onto this board, was that we would build our budget from the school level up. And we would staff our classrooms first. Because, and this is me speaking, I'm not speaking for anyone else on this board. I spent many years working for Volusia County Schools where my perception was we built our budget from the top down instead of first staffing our schools. We're here to educate children, and they come first. Everything beyond that education piece, yes, we need everyone, okay? We need bus drivers, we need bus attendants, schoolway cafe guardians, you know, custodians. We need district staff. But, and Dr. Fritz, I don't think I'd be remiss to say, I told you that was like my top priority, was to have our schools staffed. So one of the other things that I asked for that I don't think any of you received, and Ms. Hazel once again worked on this, and it's even more detailed than what I was asking for. But I asked where we are right now. Because I only see my page, you know, where I can look at Blue Lake Elementary and say, "Blue Lake Elementary still needs a classroom teacher." Or I can look at Deland High, and Deland High may need two core teachers and a non-core teacher. We've got to staff those spots. Like, we shouldn't hear from a parent that we're at this point and their child still doesn't have a teacher in front of them or that they're missing three or four periods a day without a teacher providing instruction. Because that to me is heartbreaking. So what I asked for and what I have, and I think Ms. Hazel would be willing to give it all to you, but I need to explain what I was asking for. I asked for a breakdown by each campus. How many individuals were certified on each campus that were not tied to a classroom, okay? But they were certified teachers or educators. And I'll just use one of my schools as an example. One of my elementary schools has a third grade vacancy, but it has one, two, three academic intervention teachers. And I really was not looking for counselors, but she gave that information to me. And I wasn't looking for a media teacher or even the ESOL teachers, but she gave that to me. So I, listen, those intervention teachers are great. But where are we at if that third grade class is not getting their core instruction? How are we benefiting from the intervention piece? Because if they've missed their core instruction, which comes the first layer because we didn't put a teacher in there, then I'm struggling with, "Okay, but we'll pull six kids out of that group to give them intervention." And I'm not saying that they don't need intervention, but they need core first. So my purpose in asking for this is, I think we need to take a long, hard look at what's happening at our school level. And a few years ago, Mr. West, we put a freeze on pulling anyone off of school campuses and bringing them into district positions because we said our priority was our schools. I have recently heard that we are taking some, and listen, I love every one of those teachers, but we're taking some teachers right now off of school campuses and putting them in district positions so that still means we're looking from here down instead of focusing on building this strong. And you know, I've said it before, if we don't build the foundation, and that's what we are, and our classrooms first, then we can put a hundred more people at the district, which I disagree with, okay? But that's not going to be the instructional piece for our students. And every one of us, no matter what job role we're sitting in here tonight, our focus first is kids. And so I want to thank your team, because I know I asked some other questions, and if that information can also be shared with my colleagues, I would appreciate it. But Dr. Fritz, I'm going to say to you again tonight, I'm challenging you to take a long, hard look and look at each of these schools just like we get the report so that we know what's happening. And I'll be honest with you, until I was handed this tonight, I didn't know that that school, I knew there was a position, but I didn't know what the position was, okay? But thank you, Ms. Hazel, for allowing me to know what the position is as of today. And I know it could change tomorrow. But I think we've got to staff our schools first because if we can get our schools staffed first. Yes, I totally agree, we got to work on the substitute piece and figure out how to get people. And I'm putting a big plug out there. If you are a parent, a community member, a grandparent, a guardian, and you don't already have a full-time job, and you can even give us one day a week to be a sub, I would encourage you to walk through the process to do that for all of our students because they are our future. But I think we've got to take a long, hard look. And that may ruffle some people's feathers. But ultimately, anyone that came in to Volusia County with an, and is certified to teach, I have to believe in their heart they came to teach and to make a difference for children. And that's where we need them first. And I'd like to ask you, Dr. Fritz, and I know that, you know, it's your decision, but I'd like to ask you not to take any more teachers off of campuses at this time or any support positions at this time and move them to district positions because our schools need them. That's all I have to say at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Haynes. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Cologne, and then I have a question.
So substitutes are.
Golden.
Well, they're not a part of bargaining unit. So really, this is something that we as a board, should we have the desire to do, can have an impact on. And what I would hate to do is, because, I mean, we all agree our subs are way underpaid right now. Bottom line. And yes, there are other people that are also underpaid, bottom line. And I know we're in negotiations right now. But, you know, it really, you know, when our subs just went up to ten bucks an hour because of the minimum wage, Houston, we have a problem. And what I, working in an industry that uses a lot of staffing agencies and all of that, what ends up happening is the organization is willing to put more money into hiring those folks because everybody's got to make a dollar, both the employee and the company, rather than allotting that funding to just make it right. I'm curious, and you may not know the answer to this, I know I didn't ask you before, but you know everything, so it's okay. How many permanent subs do we have? Folks who serve us all year long? I mean, it's just a rough number, and if you don't know the answer, we could talk about it offline. But folks who serve us all year round and have just been a staple to our operation, how many would you say we have in the district?
So, and I'm going to qualify, when you say permanent subs, you're probably talking about what we call long-term subs, which go on for more than, and our practice is, if they go more than thirty days, we consider them a permanent sub. So for example, if we have a vacancy or a teacher that's on leave for the year, we may hire a sub into that position and try to keep that sub consistently for the entire year. So that is the question. And I think we had that number at one point, and it was, it was not a real large number, but it was something that was manageable. And so that's kind of one of the ideas of what we're floating to is if we're looking at somebody that we would consider a long-term sub, if we could kind of ratchet up their benefits, if they're willing to stay with us for that period of time, even though they may not meet the qualifications, obviously, for certification reasons or whatever as a teacher, but they could do that as a substitute. Those are some of the things that we're looking at to try to look at a long-term sub and the benefits that we could give them.
Because I'll share with my colleagues, and I do owe you a response on this, Dr. Fritz, that we had some folks who served us all last year and were not eligible for the thousand dollars that we gave everybody else. And, you know, these are folks who served us. I mean, in a year that nobody, I mean, I mean, it was, it was difficult for a lot of folks. And so, you know, those are the things that leave a very, very bad taste in folks' mouth. And so, you know, Dr. Fritz agreed to look into it, and I haven't given you the opportunity to. But I think, you know, the subs weaken impact. And I'm glad to hear that we're considering that. We have one young lady who has been working as a permanent sub for almost twenty years. And everybody seems to know her, I just met her. And she has been one of these subs that when the teacher is out, she takes the class. And she's there for pre-planning, she's there, it's her classroom for a year. And, you know, due to circumstances, she needed health benefits. So she had to change her position to take another position, which is not in the classroom, in order to get health insurance. So as we discuss about the, and by the way, this young lady loves being in the classroom, but she's not in the classroom right now because she needed health insurance. So I think it's, you know, we're going to have to be innovative. All businesses are getting innovative as it relates to the workforce. And I don't know that I favor going to a staffing company because usually they charge theirs and then some. First, you know, when we still have a lot of work to do to even make it inviting for folks to come and do the difficult work that is required. So bring us ideas, bring us numbers, I mean, at least.
That's what we're trying to do, is bring options.
Because, I mean, you know, fortunately, that group there, we really could make a difference on, you know.
Agreed.
Thank you.
I need to correct something. And Ms. Haynes said, "We don't have campuses with teachers running all over without in front of kids." The majority, if we have intervention teachers, are filling vacancies. I met, I've met with half our principals yesterday, and that was the topic of conversation. A lot of the academic coaches and intervention specialists are filling vacancies on their sites. That's where they're at. I'm not saying it's a hundred percent, but that's what we're, we've already encouraged our teams to do that. And at the district level, we're sitting on positions. And we have six positions in elementary right now that need to be serving other schools that we're not filling unless we can find somebody from outside the district. So I think we're doing the right work. I think that we need to go back to where the problem is rather than throwing stones. The problem is there aren't people out there. And this didn't start the beginning of this school year. It's gotten worse, there's no question about it. But we have encouraged every single principal that if you have an academic coach, a literacy coach, a math coach, an intervention person on your campus, and you have a vacancy, that's where they need to go. More than encouraged, we've told them that, that's where they need to go. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Fritz. I just have some specific clarifications. On your slide number ten, the centralized hiring update.
Yes, ma'am.
Did the candidates who accepted positions, or the candidates we offered positions, those who didn't accept our positions, did they give you a reason why?
So some of them did and some of them didn't. You'll notice the second column there is actually candidates who took jobs elsewhere.
Yes.
So a number of them actually did take jobs elsewhere. Some that we just offered positions to just simply said, "This isn't for me." So they would go to another position. And you'll notice that, you know, some of them, for example, if it was an ESE position, if they were looking for a support facilitation position, and it might have been a multi-position, then, you know, they made that choice to do something else. But that, yeah, is kind of broken down. And some of them did tell us that it was the job that they took somewhere else, and sometimes it was just that they chose not to take the job that we offered.
Did many of them say it was salary?
I don't know, I would have to ask Ms. Mahaney that. That is obviously always something that our teachers take into consideration, as Ms. Albert brought up before, relative to other districts. Our starting salary is lower than some of our surrounding districts. And so obviously, that is a concern. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like to kind of know why some are not accepting the positions. I think that might be helpful.
I can ask Ms. Mahaney to get that information for you. She does do a very extensive kind of interview process. And we're trying to do exit interviews for those folks that are leaving to find out why they're leaving and that sort of thing as well. So, but I'll try to get you that information about why these folks didn't get it first.
Okay, thank you. And also, I'd like to know, when you look at resignations and retirements, were there more? And you lumped them together.
We did.
But are there more retirements last year than this year, or more resignations this year from last year? You don't have to tell me that right now, you can send that to us. I think that would be interesting to see how many just kind of said, "I'm done."
I can definitely look at that. I just found, because when, it was interesting. The reason that I bring that up is because I asked the question, and I said, "Christy, how is it that we've hired, you know, over a hundred teachers more this year than last year, but we have, you know, this many vacancies still?" Because I know we didn't add that many allocations. We did add some because of the students that came back, but we didn't add that much more. And when we started looking at the retirements, I asked, "Let's just find out what the retirements and the LOAs are from July to right now." So we took the time period between July, August, and September of last year compared to July, August, and September of this year. So what I don't know is whether some of those people who didn't want to come back last year waited to the last second, and that could attribute to that number as well.
I do know several who did that.
Yes.
And one in particular waited until her husband retired. When he retired, she did as well. So everyone has a different personal situation.
Correct.
And I also noticed on your vacancies, the one sheet you gave us that Ms. Hazel put together, as in most companies, when you're hiring, most of the absences are on a Friday or a Monday.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. I'm so glad that you saw that.
Yeah, I'll tell you, Friday, September third was real popular.
And part of, thank you for bringing that up, if you don't mind. What Mr. Cologne talked about also in the group that I'm getting together is maybe even to think about of some sort of an incentive that we can do to have teachers, you know, who would be willing to sub on a Monday and a Friday. You know, an extra, I don't know, twenty dollars a day for Fridays, good lord. You know, or something like that would be a definite benefit. Because you do notice every one of the Fridays are the uptick of when it hits. So yes, ma'am.
I also noticed on Monday, the twentieth, which was a professional development day, there were still two hundred twenty-seven vacancies.
Yes, yeah, or that actually, that were out, correct.
Yes.
And you'll notice the twenty-three that were filled were probably vacancies, substitutes that were filling vacancies, that we allowed them, because they're considered long-term subs, to actually go to the professional training so that they would be able to take advantage of that. So yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just thought it was interesting. And I have, I have something I'd like to reward Ms. Carol Sawyer. In your slide eleven, when you have your MOU for bus attendants, hopefully paraprofessionals and substitutes, I think we should call it the Sawyer Reward.
Yeah, that's what we do, kind of over HR, that's exactly right.
It was her idea, and I think she needs to somehow have her legacy emblazoned. We need to have a banner, apply for the Sawyer Reward.
It's actually the Sawyer-Moyer Award because the two of them are like. It's actually the Sawyer-Moyer Award, because the two of them are like in tandem.
They rhyme. Okay, I would just like to, and if we can put that name in a policy, I'd love to do that. Okay, she can be enshrined.
I'll work on that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
West. Dr. Fritz, anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so thank you. 2001, Board Action Item: Adoption of Proposed Amendments to School Board Policy 303.
Let me ask Ms. Wiles and Mr. Penley to come forward.
Fritz, Madam Chair, board members. Bringing forward tonight, item 20.01, for adoption, School Board Policy 303, Special Programs and Procedures for Exceptional Students. This is an existing policy 303. This amendment has been advertised to bring our local policy in line with state and federal rule changes that are on a trailing annual basis, so these are actually changes to our policy, amendments to our policy that are required pursuant to federal and state law changes that have occurred. The policy has been brought before and read for first reading. It was advertised for the requisite statutory period and is ripe for adoption tonight. If you have any questions concerning the specifics of the amendment, Ms. Wiles, our ESE executive, is here to address this.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Is there public?
Yes, as soon as we make the motion.
The superintendent recommends the adoption of the proposed amendment to School Board Policy 303, Special Programs and Procedures for Exceptional Student Education, or Exceptional Students.
Thank you for your recommendation, Dr. Fritz. Is there a motion now, based on his recommendation? Okay, thank you, Mr. Persis, for a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it was seconded by Mr. Ruben Cologne. Okay, are there any cards? Thank you very much. Ms. Short, would you come on up? Good evening. We have three minutes, ma'am.
Good evening. I know that this is pretty much a standard document that the district fills out and submits to the state every few years, but I did want to take the opportunity to address a couple of things. One is in Section D, where they talk about surrogate parents. I had the opportunity to go through the training a couple of years ago, and I don't think we've been offering it. And I just want to say that I think that that's something, I've had parents and community members actually ask me about how to become that, so I think we do need to spend some time on opening that back up to the community. I also want to talk about the fact that we have some things going on in regard to ESE that I'm a little concerned about. Some of our ESE classes, I know that we're saying that we're, you know, talking to schools about staffing them correctly. That's not what I'm hearing. There is a specific situation, I think at Pathways Elementary School, where there's a teacher who's out on maternity, and I guess until after Christmas, and they've had a sub in there since day two, and they've been pushing them to put, you know, somebody in there who's ESE certified, and they were basically told no. So, and that's just one situation. I'm hearing that we have campus advisors on some of our campuses that are not doing their job, you know, making sure that our campuses are safe and secure. Instead, they're kind of covering some of these classrooms. We have way too many kids in some of these classes, and I know, I keep hearing that we're, you know, we're staffing, we're giving them units. This is all wonderful, but we need to do something. We need to take and look at how we're going to get these classes addressed, and I know that the people in this room care about, especially this population of children. And so, you know, pretend for one minute it was your kid in this class, and I can tell you, if it was mine, I wouldn't be okay. I wouldn't be okay for one minute, and I don't think any of you would be. So we have to do better. I mean, and that means maybe making some people do some things that maybe they don't want to do, leave the district. No one's going to be crying, I can promise you, about, you know, the district people having too much work to do. Kids have one chance at being in school, one chance. Every day, every day of this year is whatever grade they're in and whatever they're doing, and they deserve to have a teacher in front of them. And we're starting week seven, so I want to see this population get more attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Short. All those in favor of, let's get my, of adopting our policy 303, proposed amendments that we've already advertised, and it's been moved and seconded for special programs and procedures for exceptional students, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Policy is passed. Thank you very much, Mr. Penley and Ms. Wiles. Okay, we now have 21.01. I have two cards left. Are there any additional cards, Ms. Schultz, for public participation? Rose Overcash. Ms. Rose Overcash?
Yes.
Hello? Come on down, say your name, where you're from, and you have three minutes. And after Ms. Overcash is Dorothy Featherston.
I'm pulling this up.
Oh, please do.
My name is Rose Overcash, and I live in Edgewater, Florida. And tonight, I am here, I was given letters from a couple of teachers that feel like that they do not have the freedom to speak. I'm going to read the letters verbatim that I received. The first teacher says, "We write referrals into the focus grade book, but when we go back to look for them, they're missing." I have written three referrals, and they're missing, and other teachers at my school have noticed the same thing. Our class sizes are busting at the seams. I have 38 kids, and 25 of them have IEPs. How am I supposed to provide a quality education? Wasting of time professional development right now. But this year, with the stress of teachers through the roof, why don't you allow us to stay home instead of watching the videos and give us the time to grade papers and provide lesson plans? With the number of absences due to quarantining, why do we still have a must-scan the DIA by X date? The rushing and shoving concepts down kids' throats to meet an oh-so-important deadline is killing our kids. They feel deflated when they get a failing grade because they were out for 10 days because of quarantine. Why is this deadline important? Please just let us teach. Why are there overflowing classrooms, not enough teachers, not enough substitutes, when we have many people, maybe at the district level, who can come in and help? We're not allowed to kick the bad kids out of class now, due to new rules. So now the disruptive kids are allowed to stay in the room and continue to disrupt, and it denies the students that want to learn their right to a valuable education. And now the kids know that there's no punishment, and there are many more fights on campus. The kids are now running the show. Also, in addition, kids are now being sent to arena subbing that's being run by secretaries, campus advisors, hall monitors, and sometimes even the school resource officer. That was the first letter. The second letter that I received today, zero consequences for kids. Detention is taken away. These kids need to learn right from wrong. The fights are getting to be out of control. Kids think it's cool to video this. The fights are much worse than what they used to be. The level of disrespect that the kids are showing, not only towards each other, but showing towards the adults. The teachers, as they go over the rules, the kids think the rules don't apply to them anymore, and since they're not held accountable, they're destroying bathrooms, they're destroying our campuses. The kids in some schools are allowed to be tardy to class with no...
Ma'am, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay.
Is there a way that you could email that to me?
Yes.
I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
To everybody, or just you?
And I will, well, yes, you can just send it to my school address, and I will give it to Dr. Fritz.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Dorothy Featherston, and then Kim Short.
Can I take my mask off?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dorothy Featherston. I'm a third-year art teacher at South Daytona Elementary, and I'm here for a couple of reasons. First is to implore Dr. Fritz. Hi, I've never met you in person. It's my understanding that Elizabeth has been asking to meet with you about once a month, just like a casual chat thing, and I just wanted to say, I just really wish you would reconsider that, and just to meet with her.
This isn't protocol, but I do.
Okay. Just to reestablish, I understand there's trust on both sides between teachers and county that's been broken, and I just want to see that repaired. I love Elizabeth, I've known her for a long time, so we all have the same goal, so, is to educate children as best as we can. Also wanted to bring your attention that I, along with nine other art teachers in Volusia County, are the only art teachers for 750-plus students. So I have 750 students that I got to do grades for, midterms and everything. 10 other art teachers are solely responsible for 600-plus students. Seven are responsible for 500 students solely responsible, and 16 are responsible for 400 and below. Our second art teacher position was eliminated at the end of 2019, 2020, and when COVID started, for budget reasons. Last year, I had multiple students attempt to hit me. I invoked my right to have one of those students removed from my class, but the question was where to put them, because there's only one art teacher. Ultimately, my request was denied, but the problem still remains, not only for me, but for all of Volusia County schools that have only one art teacher. I can never have a student removed from my class because there's no other art educators to educate them. And I'm put in a situation where I have to teach that child who was violent with me last year. I also wanted to make you aware that I was told that a student's violence was a manifestation of the disability, and I don't understand how this is an acceptable excuse for allowing students to continue hitting teachers. So I skimmed through the 168 pages of the School Board Policy 303, which you just went through for clarification on this term, to see if it even applied to my situation. So it's my understanding that that order is to determine if a student's behavior is a manifestation of his disability, requires an IEP manifestation committee determination. And I just want really better explanation of the usage of this term, manifestation of disability, as it pertains to violence.
Thank you. Can we make that happen? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Featherston. We appreciate you coming and staying. It's valuable information. Okay, Ms. Short, and then after Ms. Short, Ms. Carol Sawyer.
Hi. I'd like to go back and talk about the budget for a minute. Thank you, Ms. Haynes, for addressing a lot of my own personal feelings. There was a budget presentation that was done to our DAC committee that I was very excited about back on December 2nd, 2020, by Deb Mueller, who was our current, who was our chief financial officer at the time. And the reason why I was so excited was because it looked like we were actually, in our general operating appropriations, we were actually making a shift from looking at what we were spending in the district administration to our instruction and instructional support. When you looked at it, it said that our actuals for 2020, we were, we had planned that we were going to spend about $26 million in district administration, but we actually came in at about $23 million, and then we were finally budgeting it for the year 2021 at $22 million. So it was moving it from being 5% to 4%, and we were moving in the right direction. And that was something that Dr. Fritz had answered questions to me regarding that during that meeting, that we were doing that purposefully because it was noticed that we were definitely out of whack with some other districts, as far as what we are doing, as far as the percent to the total. At the same time, we had moved spending our instruction and support from 2020 actual, it was about 72%, $355 million, to planning to spend $378 million at 74% of the total. So we were moving in the right direction. I'd really like to see the totals and where we are currently, as to where 2021, I want to see it all added up in the same little chart and presented to this board, because I'd like to see what we actually ended at for 2021, because it was not presented that way again. I'd also really like to see what we're planning at, because I want to see if we're really going in that direction, because it doesn't seem like we are anymore. And again, I have real concerns about what we're doing in our schools as far as how we're staffing these jobs. It does not seem to me like this is a recruitment problem whatsoever, and I don't, I mean, nothing against our new teachers, but you cannot expect a new teacher to have the same ability in front of a classroom that a tenured teacher has. You know, you got, you got, there's just no way. We have got to work on retainment. I can't tell you the last time I saw anybody put pencil to paper and tell me what it costs when we lose people in this district, and I think we've gotten away from that entire process. It's something that I think this board should be looking at, and as a matter of fact, I think this board should be proposing an amendment to get it in line. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Short, and Ms. Carol Sawyer.
Carol Sawyer, you're in the meeting. Thank you, Ms. Cuthbert, for your...
You're welcome. I didn't know you were in the audience.
Your nice words. I was, I was sitting back there, nice and quiet. And yes, at bargaining the other day, Mr. Moyer and I, we do have a very good working relationship, and I, and I said, "I wouldn't trade him for anything." And somebody made the remark, "What about a 4% raise?" And I said, "No, but I would for a 6% raise."
He was a nice man.
Okay, but I didn't want to disappoint you guys tonight, and all the human capital that's on the wall over there, by not speaking tonight. So I wanted to say, I think it's about time that we make masks optional for our staff or our human capital, whatever you would like to call them. After we heard Ms. Faust talk tonight about her husband, who is a mechanic, and he's trying to do his job with a mask on, to me, is a little ridiculous. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Let's make masks optional for your staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sawyer. That concludes public participation. Now we are at the end of our meeting, 22.01, comments and items from the school board. Would someone like to begin? Mr. Persis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually had three things I had written down before I came here this evening. The first one, I've already spoken about, and that is asking you, Madam Chair, Superintendent, if the board, if they would consider on a future agenda about extending the age for ESE students from 22 to 23 for one year, and if that can be put on an agenda for discussion, I would like that. The second thing that I had was actually to ask Dr. Fritz about the, what he was thinking with the employees wearing masks. It actually was what I had on my paper. Were you looking for a certain positivity rate in the district, or I wasn't sure what your guideline was going to be? Because that, I believe, is not a policy, it was just...
It's not a policy.
What the superintendent, so you could change it whenever you decided to. And I didn't know what you were gonna, you know, I mean, I don't know whether there's a magic threshold that you were trying to find before you made them optional.
Ms. Roland and I are talking about the numbers. We still have a fairly large number of unvaccinated employees, and quarantining our employees is problematic. It's problematic for us when they go out and we're filling positions.
Yeah.
I've shared with you some examples of when it's been problematic. So I, you know, I told the employees that we would do this all the way through October 15th. I don't see any reason to change that at this point. It will be reevaluated as we get closer to that. If we feel... If we feel like that things have stabilized, then absolutely, I will reconsider that. But right now, part of the reason we did this, and if you'll remember, I went to my principals and we had conversations about this, the importance of making sure that we're not only protecting one another and being able to stay in the workforce, but also protecting our young ones that are incapable of being vaccinated or are not vaccinated. So it's one that will be continually reevaluated. If we get close to that 15th, which is only two weeks away, and I feel like that we're stabilizing, then it's a good chance I could revert that decision. But right now, we're staying the course.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to get an understanding of your thinking. And the other thing I think that's important is that for the
I need to address, you brought up two things, so do you mind if I address the first one?
Oh, yeah, can I just make a comment about the second one first? And that is that if, in fact, the employees are kinda hearing that you may be reconsidering that, I'm just saying for those who maybe were on the fence still about getting a vaccination, you know, I think that if I'm an employee and, you know, I don't, I don't want to wear a, want to wear a mask, I may want to consider getting a vaccine. I mean, there are some that you could make it optional, and they may decide to, to wear the masks still. I mean, it's just because you make it optional doesn't mean that everyone isn't going to wear, wear, wear a mask. But I just think that, I don't think that, hearing just what you said, I don't think the expectation is likely that they'll be wearing masks for the rest of the school year. I just, I just don't see you saying that, but we'll see, we'll see. And yes.
No, that's all right. I'll hold.
Yeah.
Anything else, sir?
I was, I thought he was, he wanted to comment on the first one.
No, I said I would hold on that.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. And the last one, the third one, was the way we report on our dashboard, the COVID cases. I really do wish that we would report it school by school rather than the way we do it now.
We have a little bit of a problem doing that.
I understand that somebody might say that, well, if there's a small school like Coronado, let's pick on Coronado, that's our favorite small, small school. And there's one case, everybody would know who that case was. Well, as a principal from, at a small school like Coronado, let me tell you, everybody at Coronado knows anyone. Small schools, everybody knows everybody's business. It's just the way it is. I mean, you have one case at University High School, you know, that's another thing. But at a school like Coronado, whether you're making it public or whether you're not, everybody knows, and that's just the way it goes. And I just think it'd be helpful, helpful for, for parents and for staff too. And as we try to make things as transparent as possible and not trying to hide anything so that people can make good decisions about whether they should have their children come to school wearing a mask. Or if you start to make the employees' mask optional, I think I would be influenced by knowing, well, how many cases are there at my school? I mean, if there are a lot of cases, maybe I would want to wear a mask. If there aren't so many, maybe I would not. But I don't know why we, we continue to not want to share that on the basis of that it may be a violation of some HIPAA law. And other districts do it, so even with small schools, and they haven't been found in violation of any HIPAA laws or privacy laws. So I would, I would hope that we might be able to consider that too. Thank you, Madam Chair. Those are my three things.
Thank you. Nice triumphant, thank you. Mr. Cologne.
So I wanted to share with you all something that's happening in my district, and none of our districts are immune to this. We had a meeting last week at Deltona High specifically because we had some of our sheriff partners who have been visiting our schools at dismissal time and writing parents' tickets as they stand in the line. And, and so we had a great meeting with the sheriff's office, and, you know, they recognized that this is a different year, that parents are driving their kids to school because they're, you know, with the Delta variant and, and all of that, you know, they felt safer. So our ridership may be down, and more parents are dropping the kids off. You know, and they were kind to, to agree that, you know, this is all related to circumstances. And we agreed to make some changes on the side of the school and how we can get more cars off in campus and off the road. We had this issue at another one of our elementary schools. We worked together to get it resolved. Today, I heard of another school where the parents had been threatened that they're gonna get tickets, and so I shared that with Chief Newman, and so we'll follow up. But I just wanted to share that with you all because, you know, this is becoming an issue at a lot of our schools. And, you know, Deltona High in particular, the fortunate part is it hangs on Wolfpack Run, but it doesn't go out into Howland. If it was going out into Howland, may potentially be a bigger of an issue. So I don't know if we need to start proactively looking at our school campuses to see, because all of this takes money, how we can better flow our cars if there's even the space. I share with you, we had this issue at Timbercrest last year, last year. And we all met, and all the minds came together, and they decided to put a, it wasn't asphalt, but they dropped like the black asphalt and kinda rolled over it. And so they created where they can probably get 30, 40 more cars off the road and onto the campus by just creating that driveway that was able to, you know, take the cars in, and they switched the bus loop for the other one. So just, just something to keep in mind, because it is something that's popping up. And, you know, thankfully, the sheriff and the lieutenant have been very kind to talk about it. I know there was an incident in DeBarry where the, you know, mom may have gotten upset at the officer and ended up getting arrested as she's picking up her kids from school. Mind you, don't know the details of the story, but, you know, it's an issue. And so thankfully, DeBarry has partnered with us to help correct this. But it is something that I think we probably, you know, as a board, need to look at to see if there is that opportunity at schools, because we may have to put some money into that. So that was all I had for today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cologne. Ms. Burnett?
Thank you. So going back to the subpay and whatever we can do. I know Dr. Fritz and Ms. Sneed and I were talking earlier today about it. And I think we're all committed to doing something so that we can benefit, our students can benefit from that. And to your point, Mr. Cologne, about the, the driving, I drove by Atlantic on my way here today, and it is, there's, there is issues on the road. And I've had parents as well from Spruce Creek who live in the area complain. I'm sure you have as well, Ms. Cuthbert. So maybe that is something we could get some of our internal people to look at in order to help better the community as well. So I have, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Haynes.
So since we're on the traffic piece, I'd like to start there. Because we are very fortunate, you know, in DeBarry, when DeBarry Elementary was built, which, you know, they're coming up to celebrate a big milestone, we didn't have as much growth going down High Banks towards the river that we do now. But, you know, I watched DeBarry open. I watched it almost double in size before they opened Manatee Cove, and we reduced the size. I mean, at one point, we had every pre-K through second grade classroom. We put 36 kids in each room with two teachers in order to, because there's, there's not a lot of space on that campus. We've added on to that building in the front. They built around the elevator shaft and added classrooms upstairs and downstairs, but they're kind of landlocked. And so I appreciated the city of DeBarry coming and joining with us. And we're hoping by spring, you know, that we're going to have a much better traffic flow there. But with that being said, what I'm hearing from, still from a lot of administrators, and as a lot of you do, I, I get their weekly, like, call-out messages or if they send an email or whatever. And I have to give Leslie Frazi credit at DeBarry because she's been very clear, like, she has met again with the sheriff's department and the city and everything. We can't block High Banks Road. I mean, we had a situation where an emergency vehicle could not get through. I mean, we can't allow traffic to block a roadway and someone possibly lose their life because the emergency vehicles can't get through or someone lose their home and things like that. So she's been very clear with her parents and said, I need you, first of all, not to line up. I don't know how many of you have seen this, but I have, especially at the elementary level. And I even saw it to Land High at one point. And I don't know, because I guess I never had that luxury as a parent that I could go and sit for two hours in my car prior to school getting out and just wait to be car number one, car number two or three in the line. And I don't understand the need, like, especially at gas prices right now. Because, you know, they're not turning their cars off. And so I don't know how you have that much extra money to burn, but she's been very clear and said to parents, we need you not to start coming to even get in line until a certain point. And she's told them, you're going to get a ticket. I mean, I don't want people to get a ticket, but when you choose to block a roadway or you choose to sit out there for two hours before school gets out, I mean, I understand, but at some point, you have to be responsible for yourself. So I need parents, I think we all do, to think about, when is my kid getting out? Do I have to be the first car in line or the third car? You know, if I'm the 15th car or the 50th car, I'm still gonna get my child. But, you know, and be cognizant of the neighborhood. You know, am I, am I in a situation that I'm going to keep an emergency vehicle getting to someone? I mean, we've gotta stop and be part of the community and everything. I will say, Dr. Shanoff and his team have done a great job. They, for those of you that haven't been over to Manatee Cove and River Springs, it's just one road and, I mean, it, I said this, you know, at one point, we can build beautiful campuses, but if we don't think about the infrastructure on how to get buses and cars in and out of places, and that's kind of what we have in Orange City with Manatee Cove, River Springs, and even University High. We didn't plan for the infrastructure on how to get cars and buses in and out of those schools in a safe way. So Dr. Shanoff went out there at the beginning of the year, and for Manatee Cove, they're coming down that one road, because it's one road. And instead of being, you know, lined up on Blue Springs and everything else, which then was blocking emergency vehicles, he's speeding them through the River Springs loop. And then they come, and so if they get there, they're going through the loop. They can't line up and block that roadway. And then being able to go in to Manatee Cove to pick up their students. And it took both principals working together and some training and encouraging people. But that is a workaround at the moment, you know, for that school. I think what we have to do is, I think we have to involve our cities because the schools sit within our cities. We need to come to the table. We need to be open and honest and discuss. But at some point, I think we have to be very clear with parents and say, two hours, even in, listen, even 45 minutes before school gets out is way too long to sit waiting, you know, in a vehicle and blocking traffic. And I apologize if any of them get a ticket, but if that's what you're choosing to do, you may need the ticket to change your pattern if we've asked nicely and you haven't changed, you know, the way you're going to do this. And I understand, you know, some people are not riding buses. But when it comes to DeBarry, it's pretty much a walk zone school. Everybody that goes there is pretty much within the two miles. And the school's over 850 kids, so it's headed back up again this year. I think it's our largest elementary right now, followed by maybe Citrus Grove. So I want the art teacher to know that I heard what she said because that's, that's a lot to place on.
That's also for gym teachers, music teachers.
Right. What happens though, I will tell you, having taught at elementary, what happens is because PE is like a requirement piece, we typically will have two PE coaches on a campus, or we may even have three. And then art and music can get slighted, like, one may only get one and one may get two, and it all depends on the size of your school. But I think it bears looking at, you know, the distribution that we have at the elementary level for our special area teachers. Because it's a lot more when you, when you have those types of numbers on your campus. And she did her homework to tell us that. And then, Mr. Persis, to go back to your first thing about extending, extending the age. When I taught at the high school level, I always knew 21 was the, you know, the magic cutoff on that. I did some further research and learned, you know, that it's, once they turn 22, they phase out either, like, I have a young man at University High who's gonna turn 22 in November. So ideally, he phases out in December at the end of the semester. His family was happy to hear that because they thought the day he turned 22, he phased out. So they were happy to hear that he gets to finish the semester. Some of those students, they did miss out on a year last year for a variety of reasons, because some of them, parents felt it best to keep them home and everything. So I don't, you know, I don't know if we can legally do it or whatever, but I would support what you brought up to allow those kids a one-time, not, not going forward every year, but a one-time chance, if possible, that they could phase out in the semester that they turned 23. So I appreciated you bringing that up. I already talked a little bit about my thoughts on getting classrooms staffed. I agree with Mrs. Burnett and I think everyone else. We've gotta figure out how to get substitutes in. And I think we, we need to do some advertising and, and explain to parents, you know, that you can come in and, and be a sub. You know, you can, you can select the school, like, you may only want to go, your child may be in elementary and you only want to go to that elementary school. Like, at this point, we'll take it, you know, we'll take anybody. If you just want one school and you only want Wednesdays, I mean, in my opinion, that's great that you're gonna come. And I even thought we should maybe reach out to some of our clubs and organizations out there. And I understand you may be part of the Rotary or the Chamber or whatever, and you may have a full-time job. But I also know that sometimes they're looking for ways to give back to the community. And I'd like to challenge them that, you know, even if they can only do two days a month, you know, but they pick a school and say, I'm available on these two days, we've gotta do something about making sure that we have, that we can cut down on this, you know, piling them into the media center or the auditorium or the gymnasium. Because remember, our administrators and our teachers are trying to overcome that. Some kids haven't been on campus, you know, for two years. And, and we gotta get a handle on this fighting, like, this fighting just, it's not benefiting anyone. And, and we need parent support on that. We need parents to set expectations for their kids. I can nicely say, my father told me when we went to school that if we got in trouble at school, whatever happened there, it would be double at home. And trust me, I believed him, and I never stepped out of line because I didn't want whatever double was going to be. But I think we need to do that. And so, Dr. Fritz, if in any way I said people weren't doing anything on campuses, like intervention teachers and all that, I know that they are. But I think, my thought was, it may be time to ask some of those individuals. And I know some have already volunteered, but say, would you like to go back in and take a third grade class this year? Or something like that. Because our children deserve stability, and they deserve someone that's gonna be constant for them so that their instruction can be the very best instruction that we can give them. And I heard you say that you don't, you know, you have some openings at the district. I would like just for you to take a review to see if we have filled any, even in the last, you know, month, that
The only positions we've filled, so far, we've said the person has to stay there until we backfill the position. there until we backfill the position. So they've been offered a position, but not until the principal hires another position to replace them.
Is that just instructional, or all areas?
Instructional.
Okay. I'd like to ask you to also take a look, if you don't mind, at all areas, because for a school right now to lose their registrar, that can be devastating, if they don't have someone constantly staying up with that work. Or, you know, to lose even a Schoolway Cafe person, you know, at this time. If, if they can't get lunch served to everybody in the time that they're allotted, that can make it difficult. And I understand that people want to apply for the positions and move up, but I just would really like to stabilize our schools before we work at stabilizing the district. But thank you, and thank you, Ms. Cuthbert.
Thank you. My comments will be for last. Mr. Dorn, do you have anything for us?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Dr. Fritz?
Ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I know this, this is very much, we have not a whole lot of information, but I, I did, was very happy with the governor's decision to get rid of the FSA at the end of next year. I am cautious, however, about the three times-a-year progress monitoring. I'm concerned about the paperwork, the time, I mean, now it's three times. And just like with the FCAT, it started off with fourth grade, eighth grade, tenth grade, and then it expanded to almost all grades, and then four, I mean, it was, so I'm a little cautious. I'm all for progress monitoring, but I also am concerned about the onus on the shoulders of administrators, our campuses, and especially our teachers, and even more especially our students. So if there is information coming down the pipeline, I do know you will be keeping us abreast of...
I can give you an update as to what I know now, if you'd like. I mean, if you'd like to hear it.
Very much so.
You know, we were at the superintendent's meeting last, last Thursday and Friday, and the chancellor did come, and I'll, I'll tell you, that they said they learned about that twelve hours before we did. There is no plans yet. We did give them ideas. I was the first to speak up, and, and they had to take the microphone away. There will be things that are statutes that will not change. For example, the third grade requirement for promotion, as of now, that would not change, because that would require a change in law. And so the standards that we, the best standards that we've recently adopted, those will not change. So what they're talking about doing is doing a, a three-time-a-year assessment, where the first and the second would be a formative assessment that would not count, really, in, for the school grade. There would be a way to measure students' progress as they're moving along. But again, as we talked to the department, they really hadn't figured out the plans yet. Know, going forward, you know, we know the FSA is here for this year, and that next year will be a baseline year. We did request that some folks that are superintendents with a background in teaching and learning be given the opportunity to sit down and work with them. For example, I'll give you the suggestion that, that I made. I asked that we move to a more of a mastery approach of learning. I, I don't believe when students get an F, it means they didn't learn anything in that class. And right now, we make them take everything over, and I think that's wrong. When a student takes the Algebra EOC, which is the gatekeeper for many of our stu- students to graduate, we know how many of the students, or we know which subsections of the test the students pass. So if you pass five of six, you still have to take it over. And where we're, where we're trying to have conversation about was, if they've already shown mastery of five of six, why would you possibly make them take the whole thing over again? Because we, what we've seen is the score decreases over and over and over. So we asked them to consider that. We asked them to consider that formative one and two, if they're really gonna be powerful, let them show some progress as they go along, and let them count. And when you do a formative one and two, let it be on what we've taught at that point, not what the entire year set of standards is for. So let's really make that be aligned. They heard that loud and clear from us. We've also talked to them about the opportunity that we have right now of, of mitigating some of the high-stakes pressure that are on our kids. We, we asked to be a part of that at the table with them as they develop this, so that that first and second formative can replace things that we're doing at districts, so we're not double-testing kids. And so we, we, we really gave them a lot of food for thought, and this was actually on Friday. And we'll stay tuned. And as updates come in, I'd like to come back to the board to build, to share with you the timelines and what's going on. But I, I too was excited, hopeful. It, it's an opportunity for us to get it right. And I think those were the words I used to Jacob Aliva. I said, "It's an opportunity for us to get it right." And so I hope we embrace that approach of mastery learning, rather than a, a one-size-fits-all pass-or-fail. Madam Chair, back to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I heard from Human Resources about programs in the pipeline for retainment, and I'm thrilled, and, and I'm, I know you're not ready to say anything about it yet, but I'm, I'm very excited about it, and just thrilled. It's been programs that I've been advocating for, for quite a while. So thank you for that work, and thanks a lot to Ms. Mahaney, because I'm sure we will hear about that sometime soon. Traffic patterns have always been a problem, and I remember campaigning in front of Port Orange Elementary with a county, a Port Orange Councilman who's, who was elected as well. And he couldn't understand why so many of the school buses were empty. He said, "That's a lot of wasted money. You should cut, cut some of those off." And, and I thought, "You know, that's a good idea." Then I realized, of course, when I asked about it, that's, is it state or federal law, that we have to pick up every student? So that bus route has to pick, has to have a seat available for any individual on that route, just in case that person decides to ride the bus. So when you see forty seats, there might be forty students on that route who have the ability and have the right to ride that bus, but maybe only five do. And that's why five might be on a bus. So, and that's what a lot of the general public doesn't understand. And of course, I didn't when I was first selected. It's, it's very important that we also noted the difference. I've been involved in three different specific situations with community members over Cypress Creek, Indian River Elementary, and Silver Sands. One lady, I spoke to, a marvelous, marvelous woman in the neighborhood across from Silver Sands, and she wanted us to build another lane onto the road, so, because it was two, two lanes, and it is. I go down Herbert Street a lot. Two lanes, and we should build another lane on the side, so cars can move over in order to go in. And I said, "Ma'am, that's not our property." But she said, "That is your, those are your cars going in." I said, "No, those aren't our cars either." And then she said, "Well, let them go through the, the campus." And I said, "Well, we can't do that because of campus security. We can't have cars all around the track, around the gymnasium." And all those seem very good ideas, but because of regulation, security, and it's the cities or the county that's responsible for the building of roads. And I do agree with Ms. Burnett, and also, also Ms. Haynes, who mentioned, we do have to work with cities and counties, because I'm still trying to get a traffic light in front of New Smyrna Beach High School. So, and a lot of other government agencies don't want to really participate, because they think everything is our job, even though it's on their property. But I do want to do a shout-out to the Port Orange Police Department. Every time I'm near a school during, when school's going in, and it doesn't matter if it's high school, middle school, or elementary school, there is a motorcycle policeman, a cop, pardon me, an officer, police officer, sitting in a car nearby. I don't see that in a lot of other communities, but I see it in Port Orange. So shout-out to whoever's doing that, because they are really on the job. They're just not sitting there, you know, looking at their phones. They're actually participating. And I have yet to see anyone not active. Some communities just do it for their elementary schools, but I have noticed Port Orange does it for all their schools. So thank you, thank you very much to them. We, we also, in the traffic patterns, we, we have a lot of fronts of schools that have lawn areas, and that's a lot of sometimes wasted space. I do know Mr. Russell, when he was superintendent, changed the front parking at Indian River Elementary, and got rid of the, the grassy areas in the front, added some tar, and made three rows instead of just two going around the front, and enabled forty-some more cars to get on campus. So there, there's just been some wonderful ideas, and if there's any a year, last year and this year, thinking outside the box, I know we're all up to the, the task, because I have seen some wonderful programs come through that I never would have thought of. And so sometimes out of the, the greatest challenges come the greatest successes. So I want to congratulate our Operations Department for a lot of the work they've already done. It is, the Campus Advisor on our campuses, especially in the high schools, and on the, I guess, do, do middle schools have Campus Advisors? I, I thought they did. All secondary schools do. A lot of times, they are overlooked in their job duties, and people don't seem to appreciate Campus Advisors. But I have yet to be on a secondary campus whose camp, uh, Campus Advisors are lackadaisical. Being at a high school for twenty-six years, they were the students' first person that contacted, before they even contacted, a guidance counselor. They knew who, what was, who, what was going on, and, and everything else. They are our, our whisperers, I think, of our students. So I wanted shout-out to our Campus Advisors who do, who are unsung heroes as well. And a shout-out to a young man who I had in class, who we made a deal, he could sit in the back, if he didn't fall asleep, he stayed awake, and we had a bargain the whole year, and he is now a Campus Advisor. And he too is a whisperer, and I'm so proud of this young man. I, I don't want to say his name, I don't have permission to, but it's neat to see the progress, the growing up, those who are so anti-education. You add a little five, ten years on them, and they're just such wonderful, wonderful adults. So those kids that are showing a lot of aggression right now, are maybe troubled, are frustrated, much like a lot of us adults are. They're only, maybe they can't express it at home, they're, a lot of them are expressing it at schools, which is, I think, why that anti-bullying program of Ms., uh, of...
Roland.
Ms. Roland, I did want to call her by her first name. Ms. Roland and her director think it's extremely important that as they become more successful, some of this aggression start to ebb. And I'd like to keep an eye on those statistics as well. I do know that the frustration of teachers, and, and myself, is one, a referral is, is not addressed. And that's what I was somewhat concerned with when, in, when it comes to a lot of the averages and the percentages, and we have to reduce so much, like in your evaluation, it was the repeat, not just all of the, the referrals, but the repeat offenders and the repeat suspensions. Those are the students we really need to address, because anybody can have a bad day. But it's extremely important that we put those, we call them the Roland procedures, into place. It might just take care of a lot of other things. But this, we do have aggression, and it's, and it's such a shame that we have it. But we also have to understand where it's coming from, and why it's there, and it takes, and it takes a great deal of strength to be kind. It takes a great deal of strength to do kind. And I think we as educators are such strong people. We have been asked to do so very much for sometimes, and, and it's been a joke for hundreds of years, teachers don't make money. We are tasked, but it's sometimes it's, it's those who are always challenged that make the, the greatest strides. So, education is not an easy profession these days. I thought I would never, ever see the day where an English teacher was in a critical shortage area, but it certainly has come about. I kind of knew this about fifteen years ago. I had a, an intern, and I was the supervising instructor, and I asked him, he came all the way from Orlando every day. He wanted to do a student internship at New Smyrna High, and he was from South Florida. His father sold yachts for, for a living. And I said, "How long can you live on the proceeds of a, one yacht?" He said, "He only had to sell one every other year, and they were fine." I said, "Well..." He said, "I know, my dad didn't want me to be a teacher, but I love it." He was an excellent, excellent teacher. I just wish he would have stayed in Volusia County, but he went home to Palm, Palm Beach. So it's, it's extremely important that we recruit all teachers. But I asked him, I, I said, "How many English teachers are in your graduating class at UCF?" And he said, "Twenty-three. Twenty-three only English teachers." And I said, "That's the whole year?" And he said, "Yes." So it's been falling off. So maybe all the testing that is being done, that English teachers are supposed to be responsible for, the writing, the reading, maybe if, if we get rid of these high-stake tests, tests, maybe we will get back our science teachers, social studies teachers, and English teachers.
Let me share real quick, English teachers is bad, but UCF is the second-largest university in the country. And four years ago, I went over, I got an opportunity, because I used to teach her, to go meet with the graduating seniors in the mathematics department. So I thought, "You know what? I'm gonna walk in, I'm gonna offer everybody in the senior seminar class a job and a contract right there on the spot, and I'm gonna hire them and take them back to Osceola County." I walked into the classroom, there were seven. Seven. And I was happy to get to them. I got to. And so that's the second-largest university. When I, when, folks, we can, we can do everything, and we can say, we can do all the right strategies. And I'm gonna tell you right now, we're gonna do everything right, we're still gonna be short. For, for you to think otherwise, I, I don't want you to sit up here and think that it's gonna be different. It, it can't be. We, they're just not there. You know, people don't go into this profession for a variety of reasons. And, you know, I, I, I hope people want to come in. I pray they want to come in. Mr. West is doing virtual affairs in his teams continuously. We're, we're reaching around the country to try to bring people here that are passionate, because you can get just as wrong by putting the wrong person in the classroom, and we don't want to start doing that. So I, I will tell you that my team and I will do everything. We will reiterate the things that we've already said. What we've already said to schools are, you should not have coaches walking around if you have a vacancy. They should be in classrooms. Do not hire at the district office for right now. You can offer a position, but they can't come here until their principal backfills their position, because the work at the district still has to get done. I know people don't always think that, but it's got to get done. And so we will do all of those things. We will do everything that we possibly can. Where Mr. West was going with the sub and the benefits, we're going to give every school, every single school a permanent sub. They're gonna have one on their campus. We're still gonna have sub vacancies. Or, well, we can work at the, the subpay, and we can try to fix that. We still have positions that are not filled. That's the reality, and I, you, you need to know it, because you can't come to this table and expect it to be perfect, because it will not be. It will not be. We will, we will do everything, and we will continue, and we will, we will try, we, Mr. West talked about a principal advisory council. He reached out to principals today to bring them in, so that we could start meeting with them to try to get their ideas, so that they can be our ambassadors in the community. Dr. Baugaben and I met today to start working a plan with Kelly, so that when people get off at the Daytona Airport, that there's a, there's a QR code that they can learn about our job offerings. When they go to the bus stations, they can learn about our job offerings. There's nothing we're not trying. We're pushing out on Facebook to try to advertise, but you can't make people walk in your front door. And so we're doing everything we possibly can. And I think we're doing as good, because I will tell you, the presentation that I presented was on HR and staff fulfillment, fulfillment at the Superintendent's Association. And, and I'm gonna tell you, every single district in the state is, is suffering this right now. So we'll, you know, we'll take any good idea that's out there, if you have them, send them through Let's Talk to Mr. West, we'll take them. We're not gonna say no to any good idea. You know, we're, for example, here's an idea. We've been doing job shares forever. They're not always convenient, we'll do them. We will absolutely do them. If there are two, two people out there that want to split a job because of childcare, yes, the answer is yes. We'll do it. So I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I just wanted you to understand, even four years ago, because remember, I said this started five years ago, four years ago, when I went to UCF, second-largest university, there were seven people in the class. That's all my concern.
That's very true. Thank you very much, Dr. Fritz. And to conclude, I encourage everybody to get vaccinated, wear masks, wash your hands, and let's defeat... and let's defeat COVID and the Delta variant. Everyone have a good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. We're adjourned.